Good afternoon, everyone. For the record, today is December 10th, 2024. It's 3:00 PM, and this is a City of Prescott City Council Voting Meeting. Mayor Pro Tem, do we have any introductions or announcements today?
We sure do. For the 23rd year in a row, the City of Prescott, Arizona, received the Distinguished Budget Presentation Award from the Government Finance Officers Association for its budget. According to the organization, the award represents a significant achievement by the city. It reflects the commitment of the governing body and the staff to meet the highest, to meeting the highest principles of governmental budgeting. In order to receive the budget award, the entity had to satisfy nationally-recognized guidelines for effective budget presentations. Congratulations to our Finance Department. Are you here, Finance Department? Very good, Mark. Very good, Lars. Thank you. Let's see, number two, Christmas and New Year's Eve hours. City of Prescott offices and service hours will be changed by the upcoming holidays. The City of Prescott will be closed on Wednesday, December 25th, in observance of the Christmas holiday, and on Wednesday, January 1st, in observance of the New Year's holiday. City offices will reopen on Thursday, December 26th, and January 2nd at 8:00 AM. For general city information, call 928-777-1100, or visit prescott-az.gov. The Prescott Library will be closed on December 25th and January 1st. Prescott Library will be open for normal hours, 1 to 5, on Tuesday, December 24th, and Tuesday, December 31st. For more information, go to prescottlibrary.info. The City of Prescott's Trash and Recycling Division crews will be off on Wednesday, December 25th, and Wednesday, January 1st. Is that us? Not sure. Sorry. Here's some opera music in the background. Let's see. The Recycling Division crews will be off Wednesday, 25th, and Wednesday, January 1st, so we will not be collecting trash or recycling on those days. Residential customers with Wednesday collection will be moved to Thursday, and Thursday collections will be moved to Friday for these two weeks. For commercial routes, we will be collecting all Wednesday and Thursday routes combined on that Thursday. Friday and Saturday collection will run as regularly scheduled. You can stay up to date on upcoming holiday changes at www.prescatrecycles.com. And this will be the final council meeting of the year. We will convene again on Tuesday, January 14th. Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, and a Happy New Year to all of you.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. We'll now have an invocation for Mayor, not mayor. I'm elevating you, Pastor Matt Cotman, from Solid Rock Christian Fellowship, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, which I'll conduct.
It's bowerheads. Father, we thank you for your goodness. We thank you for this city, Arizona's Christmas city. This time of year, we remember what Christmas is about, that you gave one who would rule over all. And Father, we pray for our government here in this city, that it would be yielded to your rule, and that they would lead us well, that we would be able to submit well to our rulers, that good decisions would be made for the benefit of the citizens. And so, Lord, lead this council meeting and grant wisdom and direction. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Now, as we approach the change of our federal administration and its impact on our constitutional republic, please join me in pledging allegiance to that great republic and this beautiful flag that represents it.
Mayor Good.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tem can tell me.
Here.
Councilwoman Ferworth.
Here.
Councilwoman Gamboji.
I am here.
Councilwoman Montoya.
Still here.
Councilwoman Moore.
Here.
And Councilmember Rusing.
Here.
All are present.
All right, we now have two presentations today. The first one regarding the fiscal year 2024 audit results and financial statements, followed by a presentation from North Point Academy students.
Thank you, Mayor. Our first presentation relates to our audit. Each year, the City of Prescott is required to have our annual comprehensive financial report audited, as well as our schedule of expenditure of federal awards and the state expenditure limitation reports. And in addition to that, every two years, we are required to have agreed-upon procedures done on the impact fee collections and spending. Today, we have Brian Hemmerly, who is a principal with Baker Tilly, here to walk through some slides and talk to you about the audit and the financial report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Again, my name is Brian Hemmerly. I'm the lead audit principal for Baker Tilly, your external audit firm. I've got a brief presentation here for you, and I'm going to try and use this thing. Oh, there we go, okay. All right, so we did issue a number of reports this year. The first report is related to your financial statement audit. So this is your, this is what we call your annual comprehensive financial report. It's a very large report. You should have received a copy of it. Oftentimes, it exceeds 200, 300 pages. This is the financial statements for the entire City of Prescott. It did receive an unmodified, or what we call a clean opinion, on the financial statements, which I'll go into more detail on what that means in just a moment. We also issued a report on compliance with laws, regulations, grant contracts, debt covenants, things of that nature. That report also received a clean opinion. No instances of noncompliance were detected during the course of the audit. We had no identified material weaknesses during the audit, so no findings related to controls, internal controls. You did have a federal, single audit. This is when the federal government requires you to get specific audit procedures on a couple of your grants. The two major grants that needed to be audited this year, required by the federal government, were the coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds and your capitalization grants for drinking water state revolving fund. Both grants that were tested had no findings during the year. Our audit was planned to provide reasonable assurance that the financial statements are materially correct. It does not provide absolute assurance. The difference, of course, is absolute assurance would require that we test every transaction within the financial statements. Instead, we'll use internal control test work. We do walk through those controls, observe them. We give any evaluation or requirements that we'd like to see made for those controls, if there are any. There were none this year. We do statistically valid sampling of your detailed transactions throughout the year to render an opinion on those financial statements. Some items that are required to be communicated to you each year, again, we had no internal control findings. There were no qualitative aspects that we felt needed to be disclosed above and beyond what's already in the financial statements in Note 1. This is where you'll find most of your qualitative aspects of the financial statements. All significant unusual transactions were audited, and we had no findings related to those items. No significant difficulties were encountered during the audit. We had no disagreements with management. There were no circumstances that affected the former content of our audit report. No outside consultation was rendered by management for our audit opinion, and there were no uncorrected misstatements. All related journal entries that were found during the course of the audit were booked in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. We are not aware of any fraud. We did not detect any fraud during the course of our audit. We did not have any noncompliance, as mentioned earlier, during the course of our audit. We do think the city will be here in a year from now, so there are no going concern issues. We believe it will be operational within one year. And there were no material-related parties that needed to be disclosed during the course of the audit. Some non-test services we had this year, we do help in preparing the financial statements, but the city themselves prepares their financial statements. We help in preparing what's called the data collection form for the federal government. This form is a form that lists out all your federal grants for the year and our related findings and audit procedures on those grants, and that was filed timely with the federal government this year. The fourth report we issued is related to your expenditure limitation report. This is required by the Arizona State statutes. It is filed with the Auditor General's Office for the state of Arizona. This year, the voter-approved expenditure limitation was $258 million. The amount of expenditures that were subject to that limitation during the course of the fiscal year were $193 million, so you did come under your expenditure limitation by $64.8 million, so you're in compliance with that particular report as well. The single audit, again, the federal single audit, you had $17.7 million in federal grant money spent during the fiscal year. Again, the two grants that were required to be tested were your coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds, capitalization grants for drinking water state revolving fund that comes through WIPA. Both of those received no findings during the year and had an unmodified opinion. The very last report here is related to your biannual agreed-upon procedures for development impact fees. This, again, is required by state statute. During this audit, we did determine one finding. There's a number of things that we performed, no matter procedures performed, but of those procedures, there were one item that came to our attention, one of 40 transactions tested related to the revenue streams for development impact fees. We noted there was an error in calculating the impact fee charged for a permit regarding the total square footage used in that calculation for residents. So the resident did have a square footage used for total square footage in the calculation rather than what's considered the livable square footage, which is what's required by the fee. So that was the only finding related to that particular report. The general fund had a nice increase of $9.2 million to fund balance this year with stronger-than-average local government, local taxes, increase in state shared revenue taxes, and then, of course, your investment income had a nice increase as well this year as well. General fund saw a $9.5 million increase in revenue over what you expected in your budget, and you spent $11.2 million less in your general fund than what you expected in budget. Your enterprise funds are supposed to be self-sustaining funds, so they shouldn't really need to be subsidized by tax dollars or outside funds. So each one of these funds, wastewater, water, airport, and solid waste, should charge enough of the users to support the operations of the funds. The water fund exceeded its operating expenses by $2.8 million in revenue this year, so it did maintain its enterprise of $3.8 million in total net position increase. Your wastewater fund had exceeded operating expenses by $1.7 million, leading to an increase in net position of 1.3. Your airport fund had operating expenses that exceeded the revenues by $5.9 million. That included both operating and nonoperating revenue. After transfers, this did lead to a decrease in your equity for your airport fund, your net position of $130,000. And then, lastly, your solid waste fund had transfers out of $101,000 that led to a decrease of net position of about $110,000 for the year. That's my presentation on all the audit reports this year. If there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer them, or, Mark.
Anything else? Just wanted to add that all these financial statements, they're wonderful reading. We encourage the public to go out and look at them. They are on our website, prescott-az.gov. Go to Finance, you'll see our financial reports there. We don't issue physical copies because they're so much better online. So please go out there. If anybody from the public has any questions, they're welcome to call the City Finance Department. We'd be glad to talk to them about the financial reports.
Mark, how does this miscalculation of livable square footage on the impact fees impact our new impact fees?
It's a relatively minor error. It was an error in the calculation, community development, when the permit came through. That has been corrected, and a refund has been issued to the property owner, and a review of other permits are being done to make sure there were no other like errors. But it's relatively small, and again, it doesn't impact the impact fee study at all or projections. It was just an error.
That's good to know. Councilmember Rusing?
We recently passed a sales tax increase that's dedicated solely to public safety services, and one of the concerns of the community was whether or not these services, the proceeds of this sales tax increase would go exclusively to public safety services. When you do your audit next year, will you be making sure that those proceeds are going directly to public safety services?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember, yes, when we review those sales tax revenues, we do make sure that they're restricted for that purpose, and that the monies that are being spent out of that fund are being spent for that purpose. So yes, that'll be part of the audit.
Okay, thank you.
And that election was noted in the financial statement as a subsequent event.
Thank you.
So next, we have a presentation from the North Point Academy students. So having spent a little over an hour or so with all of you last week, welcome here, and just relax. We're all, we're all nice humans. So please proceed.
Yes. I am Trisha Halter. I am a teacher at North Point Expeditionary Learning Academy. I teach 7th grade, social studies, and ELA. And so, this is our 7th grade class. Most of them, we're missing a couple today, but they're all sitting right over in our row back here. Wave, this is where you wave. There you go, okay. And each semester, we have what we call an expedition, and we got to share a little bit last week with our mayor, Mayor Pro Tem. Thank you for joining our class last week, about our expedition is it's a theme or a focus for the semester. And this focus this semester was the pros and cons of progress. And they learned all about how progress can help us, or maybe not help us, whether that's societal, scientific, all of that. Then we have what we call a final product at the end of the semester. And that final product, instead of a test, a final on a piece of paper or a computer, they actually make something. They put something together, showing their combined learning from all of their classes, their academic classes this semester, which is a really cool thought and idea, and I know other schools do it, but I love it that they show through their work what they have learned, not just A, B, C on a test. So their final product, they are going to tell you, and then they are going to ask at the end for something. So here is my first student.
If you could talk very closely to the mic, okay? Like this?
Yep.
I'm scared, okay. Oh. Who are we? We are 7th graders attending North Point Expeditionary Learning Academy. Every semester, we spend a few days going out in the real world, whether that is camping or going to the local colleges or a job site. This semester, we decided to engage our local community for our final product. We interviewed community members for ideas. Our final product this semester involved making a community survey to discover what the people want and how we could help. And that's a picture of us in Jerome when we were on one of our expeditions.
Don't forget to tell us your name.
Oh, my name's Jaden.
Hi, I'm Jonathan. So this, we went and we asked the community, some community members, what they think could, would help Prescott the most, like improve it. So what did the surveys look like? They were, they, each survey had six questions, and each question was based on the topic, how to improve the City of Prescott. And why did we make them? We made, we made the surveys because Prescott is not as maintained as it should be, for as many people are living in it. We need better roads and parks, and people would like more sporting events and more activities for kids and teenagers. How did we make them? We made both physical and digital copies. And each question, we took a while to make because we all had to think of it. Yeah.
Hi, I'm Mackenzie.
It's me again.
If the City of Prescott upgraded parks, which would you like to see more of?
While surveying, we found that most people want more water parks in Prescott.
If the City of Prescott offered community trash cleanup days, which areas of town do you think have the most need?
Most of the people wanted more trash cleanup days, at least the local lakes. On the graph, you can see that more than 30 people chose that option.
If Prescott offered more community gatherings for youth and adolescents, what gatherings would you like to see?
This, oh, this graph shows that the community wants more music festivals and fairs slash carnivals for youth and adolescents. Sporting events is close behind with 17 votes.
On a scale of 1 to 5, would you join a community gathering for picking up trash?
This graph shows the results, whether or not people would want to join a community trash pickup. This is on a scale of 1 to, this is on a scale, 1 to 5, scale, nevermind. 1 means wanting, not wanting to join at all, and 5 means very willing to join the gathering. As you can see, 25 of the participants chose 3, which means people are willing to, but not that much.
It's Kenzie again. What our project is about, our project is about fixing the Pioneer Park skate rink and fixing Kayla's Hands to encourage more people to go there. Why it needs fixed? The skate rink at Pioneer Park needs to be fixed because it has cracks and the paint is fading, which makes it harder to play hockey and roller derby. The boards around the rink are also worn. The Kayla's Hands Park is rickety, rickety?
Rickety.
Rickety, and some of the equipment needs to be fixed before it becomes dangerous to play on. Why this project? We picked Pioneer Park Skate Rink and Kayla's Hands Park because it is a place where Prescott families love to play. People play sports and hold events there, like roller derby and hockey. Even some of our own students and teachers like to go there. And we know people would like it if you could skate and not feel like you're skating on a bunch of rocks. Also, we want to revitalize Kayla's Hands Park to continue honoring Kayla and provide a safe place to play.
Well, I see our Parks and Recreation Director back there is making copious notes.
Awesome. Glad he's here. So in conclusion, our class would love to see some improvements made at that park. We do have, one of our 7th graders is on a roller derby group there. I do play hockey over there as well, so I'm one of those that enjoy the park. And I see it every week, and I see the kids playing in the park. I hear the noises and all that, and our kids in the classroom shared a lot of stories too of how they enjoy it. So in conclusion, I also want to say that next semester, my hope is that I take this class out and do our own community service. We want to help pick up the park. We don't just want to bring an issue to your attention and then say, all right, deal with it, you know, we're all in this together, right? And that's what I teach in my classroom. So we want to help. My students want to be involved, and so we hope to hear from you guys. And with that, Jonathan?
On behalf of North Point Academy, I would like to say thank you for hearing us out today.
Councilwoman Ferworth, you had a comment?
I do. I just wanted to thank you for the presentation, and I would encourage you, when you know what date you're going to the park to help clean up, let us know what it is, and we'll be sure to put it out there, and we'll all come out and help you pick up the trash. Thank you.
Mayor Pro Tem can tell me?
Thank you very much, Mayor. Trisha, I'm very impressed with your class, by the way, and I love the fact that you are starting them young in understanding the process that government takes. I think the more we talk about things to our kids, it becomes familiar, and it's not sort of that thing that everybody else does, and they can become involved. And I noticed they were not shy. They're very well spoken, so good job to you. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And again, one of your answers, one of your questions in the class is, no, I don't have a limo and a driver.
And the other one was, do I have to pay taxes? And yes, you do have to pay taxes. I'm sorry.
Okay, we'll now move on to our proclamations. So I'm going to present a proclamation in honor of Major Frank Shield Jr.'s Remembrance Day. Is there anyone here to accept that? Is there anyone here to accept that? Sorry, Betty's not here. Yeah, John can, if he's here. John's in the back with the gray sweater. Alright, are you all ready for the whereas's? Proclamation, Major Frank Shield Jr. Remembrance Day, December 10, 2024. Whereas Frank Shield Jr. was born November 20, 1917, in Phoenix to Frank and Verdi Fernandez, and came to Prescott with his family in 1923. And whereas in junior high, he organized the Prescott Junior Aeronautical Club, and in high school was known as the Flying Cowboy, graduating in 1935 and declining in appointment to West Point. And whereas after two years at the University of Arizona, he was accepted into the Army Air Corps. His motto was that he would rather fly than walk. And whereas he completed basic training at Randolph Field, Texas, and after months of intensive training at Kelly Field in Texas, was awarded his coveted wings as a second lieutenant on November 28, 1939. And whereas in July of 1941, Frank was recruited into the American Volunteer Group, known as the original Flying Tigers. And whereas Frank originally served as a fighter pilot who destroyed seven Japanese planes, making him an ace. Under General Chennault's command, Frank became a reconnaissance specialist, flying over 200 missions. And whereas Major Shield accomplished more in his short life of 25 years than most, he was awarded a number of medals, including a Silver Star, two distinguished flying crosses, a British Distinguished Flying Cross, two China decorations, the 5th Grade Cloud and Banner, and the Four Star Wing Medal. And in honor of Frank Shield, a rest camp for soldiers named Camp Shield was built in China. And whereas on December 7, 1942, exactly one year after the attack on Pearl Harbor, Major Shield was killed in a plane crash in Kunem during a ferocious storm. He was finally laid to rest with full military honors on October 20, 1947, here in Mountain View Cemetery. He was truly one of the heroes of the greatest generation. Now therefore, I feel good, Mayor of the City of Prescott, to hereby proclaim in honor of Prescott's legendary aviator, December 10, as Major Frank Shield Jr. Remembrance Day. Have a couple of things to say?
I did, if you want. My name's Kathleen Houchen, and I want to thank the mayor and council for having us here today. And it's, I'm also a member of the Yavapai Chapter, Daughters of the American Revolution. And today is a day for remembering Major Frank Shield Jr., our World War II legendary aviator. A day to honor someone who should never be forgotten. The proclamation says most of his history, but I just wanted to know, he gave his life in service for our country, doing what he loved, flying. Major Shield's service was largely forgotten by his hometown until recent years, when his history was brought to light primarily by Elizabeth Bergot and recognized by the Prescott City Council on a number of occasions. So our hometown hero is forgotten no more. Thank you so much.
Alright, as the mayor makes his way back to his seat, I'll move us on to the next topic, which is the open call to the public. The City of Prescott welcomes public engagement. Residents may comment and address the council regarding items that are not included on the posted agenda during the call to the public. If you wish to speak, please complete a green speaker card and submit it to me prior to the meeting being convened. As a reminder, speakers are limited to four minutes, and the call to the public will be limited to 40 minutes in total, with the following stipulation. Citizens will be limited to addressing the council on the same topic only four times in total. If a topic has been addressed more than five times by different speakers, the mayor may limit future discussions on this topic. And topics of a primarily national concern may be limited at the discretion of the mayor. I do not have any open call comment cards. And unless there is anyone that wants to address the council on that, we will move on to the consent agenda, Mayor. Yes, sir?
Is it possible to address the council on an issue that is on today's agenda?
After the item is presented, you can submit a blue speaker card to me, and you'll be called up in the order that your card was received.
Cool. Thank you.
Alright, having no open call to the public requests, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Does anybody on the council wish to pull any items from consent? Councilwoman Ferworth?
Yes, I'd like to pull item 9B.
Any other items? Just that one? Alright, I'll entertain a motion on the remaining items.
I move to approve consent agenda items 9A, C, D, E, and F.
Second.
Alright, we have a motion and a second. Please vote.
Councilman Gambogi? Are you a yes? Thank you. Mayor?
Two.
Are you a yes? Thank you. Passes 7-0.
Very good. Councilwoman Ferworth?
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to pull this because this is the results of the most recent canvas for the Prescott special election that we just had on Prop 478. And I think it's really important to take time out to think about learnings as the council moves forward on things. We had discussed as a council, when was the best time to do this ballot initiative? And while some people and people on the radio like to say that we should have done this next year, in May or in August, we felt like it was really important to do it in November. And I believe the results show not only that we won by 13 points, thank you very much, City of Prescott, but it had the most voter turnout that we've ever had on a city initiative in the City of Prescott. And so when you're doing something like passing a tax increase, you don't want to slide that by the public. You don't want to slide that by the voters. You want to run right at the barking dog and get the results. So we had, if you think about people who voted yes and no, and people who even had the ballot and cast their ballots, but chose not to vote on this. In total, we had an 89.4% voter turnout, and almost 32,000 of the 35,800 voters got a chance to vote on this. And I want to tell you how big that was. When you look at the last, most recent elections, the 2021 city mayoral race had like a 57% voter turnout and was 20,600 ballots votes cast. If you compare it to last summer, the city council election that I got elected on, that was only a 43.5% voter turnout with 15,000 ballots cast. So coming in at 89.5%, the voters cannot say that they didn't turn out and they didn't have their voices heard. And so I just wanted to make that learning. There's a reason why the state statute, even though we're a charter city, it doesn't apply to us. But the state statute encourages towns and municipalities that if they're going to do a tax-related item, they put it on the November ballot of even years. And the rationale is because that's when voters vote. And so we should feel really proud that people got involved in this, and we didn't get elected by 43% of the voters. This was approved by, you know, 89% of the voters had their words heard. So I appreciated that learning, and I want to share it with the community and the council. We should be really proud of taking this risk and making it happen. And now we can start working on improving our public safety in, you know, months, almost a year ahead of when we would have done it otherwise. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Ferworth. I'll entertain a motion on this item.
I move to approve consent agenda item 9B.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Please vote.
Passes 7-0.
Alright, we'll move on to consent ordinance.
Adoption of ordinance number 2024-1867 in ordinance of the mayor and council of the City of Prescott, Yavapai County, Arizona, authorizing the granting of a utility easement to Arizona Public Service Company and Arizona Corporation, and authorizing the mayor and staff to execute any and all documents to effectuate said easement. And adoption of ordinance number 2024-1870 in ordinance of the mayor and council of the City of Prescott, Yavapai County, Arizona, authorizing acceptance of donated real property between the City of Prescott and Michael L. Galapio, a married man, as his sole and separate property, and Susan D. Lucas trustee, a successor in trust under Susan D. Lucas Living Trust.
Mayor?
Councilmember Rusing?
Thank you. I have a question about the APS easement for the safe complex at the airport. I reviewed it, and I would like to find out if it's going to be underground utilities here because since it's close to the airport, are we going to have power poles with overhead wires? Or is it all going to be underground?
It'll be all underground. And we're a little bit ahead of the development curve, so the contractor will begin the next month or so. Completion at the end of 2025. So we have plenty of time to put those in there, but the protocol is to keep them underground. And I believe that's the APS protocol as well.
Okay. And then my other question is, is this going to be just exclusively for APS's use? Because there's, you know, other utilities, maybe fiber optics or something? Do they have to use a separate easement? Or can they share this easement with APS?
They can be shared. In this case, it's specific to APS to serve that one complex. But we're positioned to accommodate other utility providers as well.
Okay. Alrighty, thank you very much.
Any other comments or concerns? I'll entertain a motion on the item 10A.
Mayor, make a motion to approve ordinance number 2024-1867.
Second.
Councilwoman Moore, did you have a last minute comment?
Thank you, Mayor. No, for item B, since she read both items at the same time. I'm sorry.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Please vote.
Passes 7-0.
So is 10B still on the agenda?
It is because the motion was specific to only 10A, have to vote on them separately. Could have voted on them together, but since there was a specific motion.
That was not ready, and it was going to be pulled, but we'll move on then. 10B, please.
I already read it, but Councilman Moore had a comment?
Councilman Moore?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I just wanted to publicly state that I am very pleased with the donation of this land and this location. The Centennial Trail, I think, is one of the jewels in the Prescott's open space portfolio. It's an amazing trail where you feel like you're a million miles away, and yet you can just look across the scenery, and you can see shopping centers and business locations. It's really quite a stunning trail and location. So I want to thank those individuals who purchased this land and then turned around and donated it back to the city. Thank you very much.
That's wonderfully generous for them. Any other comments or concerns? I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to adopt ordinance number 2024-1870.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Please vote.
Passes 7-0.
Alright, we'll move on to regular agenda item 11A.
Approval of multiple items related to additional funding support for the Pure Imagination Festival as follows. Approval of city contract number 2025-113 with Pure Imagination Festival LLC, and approval of the waiver of park fees for the fiscal year 2025 event.
Hello, Mayor, Members of Council. Christina Binkley, Tourism Manager. It's my honor to bring the Pure Imagination Festival request back to you. As you may remember, a couple of months ago, Candace Devine came and presented to you all about additional requests for both cash and in-kind services from the city to further support pure imagination. You should have all the information in your packet, but I'm available to answer any questions you may have.
Questions or comments? Mayor Pro Tem?
Christina, about the waiver of the city park rental fees, I've kind of, I've gotten, I've been contacted by several people that were not real happy with that. Can you kind of walk us through that?
I would be happy to, but I think Joe Baines actually would be a better person to do that. So Joe, would you mind joining me?
Thank you, Mayor and council. Yes, my understanding is that the waiving the park fees would be reimbursed out of bed tax, so it wouldn't be at a cost to our budget, Parks and Rec budget. Is that correct? Yes.
So help me understand this. The park fees are being waived to the Pure Imagination Group to be reimbursed through the Tourism Fund. Is that right?
That was a recommendation from the Tourism Advisory Committee to you guys.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Ferworth?
Thank you, Mayor. I do have a concern with waiving of the park fees because we have many other organizations that use park facilities and have not had the opportunity to have their fees waived. And so, you know, my concern is the fees that you raise are used to maintain the parks and the facilities. Things even like renting of the gazebos and the grass and everything that goes with maintaining our parks to the public standards. And so are you as concerned as I am about other groups coming forward tomorrow, asking for their 2025 fees to be waived? And any suggested rationale as to how we would handle those requests?
Councilwoman Ruth, that's a very good concern. And I would expect that the other events, there's at least four other major events that are, you know, on the same scale as the Pure Imagination Festival. I would expect that we probably would see some of those folks coming forward for the same request.
And is the tourism budget able to absorb all of this?
That's a great question, and I would say no offhand. So the 7,600 that's in your packet, that is what's budgeted for this year. But park fees for Pure Imagination and every other event feels a little overwhelming for our budget to take on.
Thank you. Joe, while you're up there, the other concern that I've heard from the public is the closing of, the potential closing of two of our public parks that weekend. One being obviously where the event is happening, but there's been concern expressed by the community, and you educated me last night, about the effects on Pioneer Park. So could you help everybody understand? Will the pickleball be operational? Will Kayla's Hands be operational? What is going to be lost at Pioneer Park?
that we use for a mountain bike race in the fall that would accommodate all this parking. And the shuttle pickup would be there, pickup and drop up would be there, so it should not impact any of the other activities, which will be plenty, and may I guarantee you that.
Thank you very much.
Councilmember Rusing?
Thank you. Initially, there was a request made by the applicant for $75,000 a year for three years. That's almost a little under a quarter of a million dollars. And then I see that to put on the one-day event, it cost her $1.6 million. Have we looked at any of their financials or their books to see what, where all this money has gone and what it's been spent on?
Councilwoman Rusing, no, we have not. Basically, up to this point, it's just been a park rental. They go through the special event application, they go through all of the requirements to rent the park, and that's kind of been the limit of what we've really had to deal with up to this point.
And then my other question is, you know, other events that are, we have other events that are at the park all day, like the Celtic Festival. Do they have a big ask like this? I mean, do they?
We've not had, no, we've not had an ask in the past for park rental fees being waived for any of those other events.
Okay. Thank you.
Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Mayor. Joe and Christina, the way this reads is that move to approve waiver of city park rental fees. Do we have a dollar amount attached to that? What exactly are we waiving? How much money is that going to cost us to waive those fees, roughly?
The park rental for last year, Mayor Protem can tell me, was $6,000.
So it's basically adding the six to the $7,600.
That's correct.
That is a combination of not only the rental, but the fire inspection and other things we do to facilitate the event. So the total fees that went to rec services from Pure Imagination was about $6,000.
Any other questions or concerns? Okay, we have two items to vote on. Number one is...
Mayor, I'm sorry, you have public comment on this item?
Yeah, please proceed with it.
Ralph Hess?
Ralph Hess, Prescott, Arizona. Yeah, I have a couple of comments. The contract that's in your agenda package makes reference to a contract summary page that's incorporated into the agreement. I might have overlooked that summary page. It might be in your packet. I don't know when I looked at it. If it's not in your packet, then neither you nor the public has that summary page, which is supposed to be incorporated into this contract. So that might be problematic. The other issue is one which you commonly hear me, okay, so it's in the packet. All right. Thank you. Is a comment that I commonly make before this council, and that's whether this particular contract's going to satisfy the gift clause of the Arizona State Constitution. In looking through this contract, what I see is on paragraph two on the first page of the contract, it says, "The organizations shall expend all funds received from the city pursuant to paragraph one above solely for the following purpose: grant, sponsorship, and support designation solely for advertising, destination, tourism, marketing and advertising, event promotion, coordination, and logistics." The case law on this specifically addresses that using the funds for activities which they would use in the course of their business, which is what that describes, does not satisfy the gift clause. Paragraph three says, "The organizations shall work with the city of Prescott to advance and promote the city's vision, mission, and values for tourism." In looking through this contract, I don't see any direct, specific, measurable benefits to the city of Prescott in exchange for your $13,600. So does this satisfy the gift clause that's required by the state constitution? It does not appear to do so to me, and that's a concern. And one, another thing that I've mentioned before this council on occasion is, it should not be up to the citizens to sue their elected officials to get them to comply with the law. Thank you.
Bonnie McMinn?
Good afternoon, Mayor and council, Bonnie McMinn, Prescott, Arizona. I'm standing here today because I attended the TAC meeting in October and was, had comments ready, questions prepared. And I was informed by the tourism department that the TAC committee does not allow public comment. And I was instructed by John Heine that if I wanted to make my comments, I needed to do it in this forum. And so I have an issue, and it's not a big issue, but I'm concerned that a citizen cannot attend a public meeting and make some statements. And further, I was, Mr. Heine asked me what I wanted to ask about or talk about, and I gave him several points. And I said, will you represent this to the TAC? And he said, yes. And I sat through the meeting and none of my questions, none of my comments were made. So that's why I'm here today. There's a lack of transparency, in my opinion. I'll start kind of in the middle. I think the numbers are misleading because they're asking for $7,600. However, they are asking you to waive $6,000 in park fees. And I agree with Councilwoman Ferworth that it is setting a precedent. Going forward, anyone could come forward and say, I want my fees waived, and the city's going to be hard pressed to not abide by that. So that's a concern that I have. Another concern that I have is relating to these grants in general, because unbeknownst to me, the packet actually indicated that there were three, this entity has received the grant three times. So this grant is now for 2025. My impression was this grant was used initially for marketing to get an entity up and running, and now this is not a one-and-done. It appears to be an ongoing situation. And the ask to Councilwoman Rusing's point was exorbitant before. So, and if you're, if you've spent $1.6 million, we don't have any visibility into how that money was spent, and in theory, this money should be spent on marketing. So I would suggest if they had 6,500 attendees, they don't have a marketing problem, they have an expense and revenue problem. And it would be helpful if the city's going to participate in this way to know what might be happening. And finally, well, not finally, I have a couple more, but finally, they promote the Prescott Resort as the hotel. Now, we know that the Prescott Resort is on tribal lands, and we know that the Prescott Resort does not pay city sales tax. So they are asking for money from TAC, and they are actually promoting other hotels that do not participate in the bed tax program. So that, I think, is a disconnect at the very least, and I think it's difficult for the city to embrace that. And then also, the sales tax, I was told that they do this geofencing and they know exactly how much people are spending. But if you are locked and loaded there, basically, you enter and you're there for the day, we should know what the sales tax collections are for food and beverage and merchandise. And I asked that question of the tourism group, and I never received an answer other than, we have an idea of what, with geofencing, what they might be generating, but I think the city should know what's being generated there. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
That's all, Mayor.
Councilwoman Ferworth?
I'm sorry, I didn't remove my withdraw. I withdraw.
Councilwoman Montoya?
Thank you, Mayor. I had a question for the city attorney about the point that Mr. Hess brought up about the contract being in line with the gift clause. I assume that's due diligence we did before this came forward, but I'm just curious.
Yeah, I think this is really a question of interpretation of state statute. As you know, under the Arizona's gift clause, you cannot give money, a government entity can't give money to a person, business, association, unless, and some of this is through case law, unless it's for a public purpose and the benefit, the public purpose is not clearly disproportionate to the amount of cost spent. And so in making decisions, you by nature have to decide if something, public benefit is clearly disproportionate to the amount spent. But in this case, these are transaction bed tax, and bed tax is called a discriminatory tax, meaning it's, these tourism-type entities are taxed more than other businesses, and therefore that money has to be spent in a certain way. That's laid out in statute to include sponsorship of cultural events, sporting events, and so forth. So I think the opinion would be clear that this would be an improper use of general fund money, but state legislatures have said this is an appropriate expense using bed tax. And so assuming, I think the reliance is that the state legislature...
To that point, Joe, this is, this is how we have spent, I mean, this is not in a dissimilar fashion to how we've spent bed tax in the past. Is that correct?
Right. It's similar to other expenses, and it's clearly allowed under state law. Now, there's interpretation of state law that you could be made, but as to this point, it's an allowable use.
Thank you.
Councilman Moore?
Thank you, Mayor. I personally have no concerns with this donation in terms of violating the gift clause. I think we're well within our rights to do this, to promote tourism and to bring people to our community. The question that I'd like to ask of Christina and maybe John is, we have a tourism advisory committee. They made the recommendation. As a mayor and council, we rely on boards, committees, and commissions to make recommendations to our city council on what we should and should not do. And I think we try as much as possible to uphold the citizens that serve on these citizens, these boards, committees, and commissions and their recommendations, and we try not to go against those recommendations because then it kind of invalidates why we even have a board or committee or commission. So I would like to hear from Christina or John, the rationale and the reasoning that a committee voted to approve this, because I think we'd like to hear the reasoning behind it.
Absolutely. Thank you, Councilman Moore. Our tourism advisory committee is made up with hospitality stakeholders, business owners. It's a group of 10, and they are longstanding Prescott citizens. And I say that for a reason, because they are involved in every aspect of the community. They sit on many boards and they represent many committees, so they don't take any requests lightly. And any request that comes from staff, they weigh fairly. And what happened when we presented this is we took the three requests and we broke them down. And the reason it is separated in your agenda is because the waiver of the park fee feels like it's outside of the purview of TAC. That is a rec services decision, that's technically a general fund decision. The additional $7,600, TAC deliberated and debated and talked about all the events that they support, and they felt that that was a comfortable amount for what Pure Imagination brings to Prescott and in comparison to all the other events that are supported by the bed tax.
Thank you for that explanation. Personally, I feel it's a small request for an event that generates a lot of tourism and brings value to our community, like so many of the other community events that we host on a regular basis here in Prescott.
Christina, can you give me an idea, how many events do we help sponsor?
Yes. Facts and figures, my favorite conversation. So we have 29 nonprofits, and I would say half of the tourism transient knock-in city bed tax goes directly back into our community, supporting a variety of events, everything from the Summer Concert Series to the World's oldest rodeo to Pure Imagination and everything in between. I think we're well over 40 organizations throughout the year that receive tourism bed tax dollars.
Forty organizations receive?
Yes.
Some bed tax?
Yes.
Without naming names, what's, what's the most we spend and the least we spend on an event?
That's a great question. Annually, I would say the least we spend for an organization is $1,100, and I believe the most we spend is about $90,000.
How many thousand?
$90,000.
$90,000. Where would be the middle?
Oh, gosh. I'm not the mathematician in the room, but $45,000 would be the middle.
Then let me ask it this way. What would be the median?
That's another term I'm not comfortably answering. So, okay...
What's the total dollar amount that you give and then divide it by 40?
Yes.
No, that's the average.
Well, sort of. It's hard to explain because the 29 organizations get up to $5,000. So the median for the nonprofits is quite a bit smaller than some of our signature events.
Okay. Where would this rank among, is it 40 you said or 29?
Forty organizations receive support, 29...
Where would this rank among the 40?
On the lower end.
Thank you.
Councilmember Rusing?
Thank you. I would just like to say that having this event out at the park takes pressure off of our downtown, because we have a lot of events downtown, and it does cause a lot of problems with traffic and parking. We have to close off streets, and by having it out at this park, I think that it keeps people from clogging up our downtown area, and it brings variety to the community. We certainly wouldn't want to have it at the rodeo grounds, you know, they're trying to increase their events there, and I don't think the neighbors would probably like having all the music and racket down there. So I think for an $11,400 expenditure, I think it does bring some variety of entertainment. It's mostly a young crowd, they have camping, and I think we can try it one more year and see how it goes, because they do spend a lot of time and effort putting this thing on. Thank you.
Councilwoman Montoya?
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to come back to Joe in light of, sorry, Joe, not happy if you hear me say that, but Joe Young, sorry, not you, Joe Baines. Too many Joes in the room. My question, Joe, is, are you comfortable going back to the parks, like the park or the fee waiver thing? Christina alluded to that that's general fund expenditure, but it sounds like we get around that concern because it's the tourism, the bed and tax dollars that pays that?
My understanding of the arrangement is that it would be a bed tax reimbursement. In that case, I'm okay with it. If not, then I would revise my opinion.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify to make sure that I was knitting together all the pieces here correctly. Yeah. And so it's because it's specifically promotional, you know, in theory. And I've talked to recipients, I guess, I think this is a good event. I think it does do a lot of good for the community. I think it brings, to the point that Councilmember Rusing brought up, it brings off pressure off the downtown area for an event, and it's an event that's a local event that my 18-year-old daughter has gone to, which is not true of a lot of the other signature events in Prescott. So I'm in favor of supporting this kind of economic development.
Mayor, if I could, just add a few comments. Just for perspective, Christina did a great job. I'm not going to help her with math, but to, just getting back to Councilmember Gamboge. So we have 40 roughly organizations that the money goes to. Of the 40, about 24 go through what's called our TAC grant process or our tourism grant process. Those are grants that are up to $5,000. They are scored, they're reviewed by the committee and scored. And I think it was mentioned, but just to reiterate, this organization has received a TAC grant already. So part of what you're seeing there, the TAC grant has already been awarded and is baked into that number. Is that correct? So this is in addition to that, to the TAC grant. So this is in addition to that, to the TAC grant. But my point is, they've been receiving tourism dollars already through the regular process. This came sort of in a different way. Came right to council and then ended up back with TAC. So, and it was noted by some members of the public, it was a little out of order. Totally fine, but what we wanted to do is make sure TAC was able to weigh in. They are advisory. I think they took this very seriously. I think you saw it come way down from the original ask. But I just wanted to give you that perspective. Usually, those requests come through the tourism office and go up to TAC and council. It just came backwards a little bit this time. So, thank you.
Mayor Protem.
John and Christina, you know, I understand the use of our tourism dollars. We want to attract a lot of these events to come here. But then there's the, you know, the hand-up versus a hand-out. At some point, these events, if they're not successful, we need to allow them to fail, because we're going to be making room for other events that are going to be helping us. The whole reason to attract these events to our city is that it ultimately is a benefit to our city, not only to fill your coffers back up. So I have looked over this list of events that we support, and I think in many events that have just been being given money over the years, I've questioned whether or not they've earned it, because the return back to the city has been minimal. So I do think we need to take another look at how we distribute these funds. And again, what are we getting back for our contribution has to be large. I'm not opposed to this event. I think the first ask was a little out of line, to be honest with you. I'm also not crazy about waiving the fees, because that, to the park, that's a different, you know, bucket of money. But again, I get the premise for tourism dollars, but let's be reasonable about it. And again, ask that question, what are you doing for us? And we need to make sure that when we give this money out, that that's being considered. Thank you.
Councilman Gambogi.
John, did you say, what we have here is $7,600 plus $6,000, correct? Did you say that you've given them other money?
They already received a tourism grant--
What was that?
Through the regular grant process, I believe it was $3,800.
Excuse me, how much did you say?
$3,800.
Okay. I do want to clarify that the total contribution that bed tax is looking at is $11,400, including the $3,800 that's already been given. That is the difference between the contract that's in front of you for the $7,600 there. We deliberated as TAC, and we made sure that we didn't have to get reimbursement or change the contract or anything. So this is in addition to their tourism grant. It's just the $7,600. That's the only number we need to focus on.
Well, I think the $11,000 is a modest amount of support for an event that really is quite significant. But I agree, I think waiving the park fees creates an unacceptable precedent, that we're bound to see other large events come, even small events come, asking for equivalent accommodation there. So it'd be my opinion to be able to approve the $7,600 in this, but sever the waiving of the park fees.
Mayor, you do have one more comment card. Candace Devine.
Please come forward.
Hello, everyone. Hello, Mr. Mayor, council, staff, everyone in the room, hello. I just wanted to make a couple comments to clarify a couple things that I've heard be said that are inaccurate. This is the first year I have applied for that grant, so it has not been multiple years. And I went through the grant process just as everyone else, and it was prior to approaching you for any further support. I also can guarantee you that that $3,800 has been already utilized just for marketing. I also want to clarify that the budget spent last year, somebody referenced 1.6 million, it was 1.3. Half that budget goes to artists. Artists this day and age are very expensive. So enjoy that. My favorite game is name an artist, I'll tell you how much they cost. The other half of that is also between renting stages that we have to bring into the park and hiring all of the personnel that we hire to make this festival actually happen. So I just wanted to clarify, because I heard some people in the audience, one, I've never spent 1.6 yet. I'm not trying to spend 1.6. I just don't have a say in what the cost of these things go for. I also wanted to clarify that the TAC grant that I did receive has been used solely for marketing. I spent over $100,000 in marketing, which is why we got over 2,000 people from 90 miles away or farther. So the last point that I wanted to address was regards to the Prescott Resort. They are a sponsor. Yes, they are owned by the tribe, but I also work with the Hampton Inn, the Hilton Garden Inn, the Quality Inn, the Marriott, as well as Forest Villas Hotel, and most, Vendome, and the Hacienda. Every hotel in this area and extended of Prescott proper into the Quad Cities is utilized in some capacity, whether it's for our security, whether it's for our crew members, whether it's for guests coming to the festival. So that is not an exclusive relationship. We love the Prescott Resort, and they offer our artists wonderful accommodations as a sponsorship. So.
That's all, Mayor.
Councilman Moore.
One final comment. I think it's ironic that we are debating whether we want to support arts and music festivals in our community, when we heard a presentation earlier this meeting from the youth in our community, that we would like to see more music festivals and arts and entertainment in our community. So I'm all for this. Thank you, Candace, for what you're bringing to our community.
Well, entertain a motion at this--
I move to approve contract number 2025113. Second.
Mayor, are you yes on that? On the contract, we have not yet had a motion on the park waiver. Right, but the motion was just for that. Thank you. That passes 7-0.
I'll entertain another motion on the second item.
And somebody could make a motion to deny if they want to do that.
I was gonna say, I'll make the motion to deny approval of the waiver of the park fees for the fiscal year 2025 event.
Second.
That's correct. If you vote yes, you're voting to deny. Yes. Do you want to vote yes or no on denying the park waiver? Thank you. Passes 6-1.
Move on to item 11B.
SUP 24-001, a request for special use permit to allow for construction of a building exceeding 10,000 square feet in the downtown business district at 201 South Cortez Street as replacement of the old City Hall building.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Chelsea Walton, Community Development Director. And I will ping IT to bring up my SUP PowerPoint presentation. I'm looking for a clicker. All right. This is a unique special use permit. It is for the area of the old City Hall, currently at the corner of East Goodwin and South Cortez. The request covers three parcels encompassed there in the red box. It is a total of 1.3 acres. This special use permit is required by our land development code as it relates to the property being located in the downtown business district. What's unique about this is there are no height exceptions, there are no requests that would fall under an ordinary special use permit. So this whole review process is strictly being governed by the downtown business district, and the requirement for any, in this case, any structure over 10,000 square feet to go through this public process. So the downtown business district covers a larger area of our downtown than our local preservation historic districts. And the two types of historic districts that we have, national register and local preservation. The local preservation districts require any kind of external construction to go through a review by our Prescott Preservation Commission. And this particular property does fall within the Courthouse Plaza District, and so it was taken through that process. So this extra special use permit process is kind of above and beyond as it relates to other projects that ordinarily come to you. And this project was approved unanimously by the PPC at their September 13 meeting. So here's a map, just to give you an idea of where the downtown business district falls. That's encapsulated in the blue highlights. And then the yellow rectangle in the middle is the Courthouse Plaza District. And you can see the project in question is the red box that just hits the corner of that lower right or southeast corner of the Courthouse Plaza District. So again, a little bit unique as far as this coming before you in this way. So the Planning and Zoning Commission considered this item at their November 14 meeting, and the guidelines, the land development code, has very specific criteria for which their review takes place. And their role was to use the Prescott Preservation Commission's evaluation of fit and form, really, based on design criteria of how this is, this project contributes to and falls within compatibility of design with the Courthouse Plaza District. So they were reviewing the project based on Prescott Preservation Commission review, and their recommendation was six to one for council to approve this item. So compatibility with the Courthouse Plaza local preservation district and the design guidelines was formally determined by Prescott Preservation Commission. This, these four criteria are the compatibility review guidelines listed in the downtown business district associated with this special use permit process. And that is what this project was evaluated against. And these items are also really found in the larger guidelines for the Courthouse Plaza Historic Preservation Section of the Master Plan. So here's a few renderings. This is a rendering that was situated in place of a real photograph. So on the right side of the screen, you see the existing courthouse, I'm sorry, the existing post office on Goodwin. And the rendering was kind of situated in to give you a feel for what the construction will look like when it's completed. Here's another view down further south on Cortez, looking kind of back at the project to the northeast. Here is a sampling of the exterior finishes and products, and where they're situated on the actual rendering there for you. So again, this particular review by council is looking at the compatibility of the overall project within the downtown business district. And developer representative, Mr. Shane Shumway, is here to answer any questions. He wasn't prepped to provide any kind of formal presentation to council, but both he and I are available to answer any questions that you may have.
Councilman Gambogi.
Chelsea, you mentioned the vote at the planning commission was six to one?
Yes, sir.
What was the rationale for the negative vote?
I don't see the commissioner in attendance, but I do see Mr. Mike King giving me some hand gestures. Mr. Mike King is the, is on the Prescott Preservation Commission.
Thank you. Michael King, Vice Chairman of Preservation. I was at the planning and zoning meeting. I can tell you it was Tom Riley, Councilman Commissioner. It was based on the size, the mass, it's too big, too big for the site. But during the debate, from the, during the whole planning and zoning commission, there was the issue, and it happened with us as well, parking. There was a lot of discussion about we're losing parking at that old site, and where do we get the parking, and this, and this, and this. But Mr., his final vote was based on the size. It's not appropriate for the plaza site that it's--
What was your vote?
All of our votes in the press commission were six, zero.
Six, zero.
That was mass and scale and design. But there was discussion about parking, which was not for us, and it wasn't for the planning commission either. We were told to bring that to your council. Other issues that were outside of our purview would come to the council, traffic, parking, those kinds of things. Thank you. Councilmember Rusing.
I see that the hotel is going to have 109 rooms. Can you tell me how many parking places there are on-site, exactly?
Mr. Shumway can answer that question for you, Councilmember.
Thank you, Chelsea. Good afternoon, Mayor and councilmembers. To answer that question, there's 104 guest rooms as designed now. There's 109 parking spaces.
Thank you. That has always been a big question from the beginning, is where people, are people going to park? And I think that you actually have one spot for every room. And, you know, people that are going to shop and eat at the restaurant are going to park anywhere downtown, and they can easily walk over. They don't need to park, actually, on the premises. And actually, isn't it true that theoretically, you didn't have to provide any parking at all, because it's in the downtown business district, right?
That's accurate. Under the code, the city code, zero parking is required at this. It was important to us, as we were looking at this project, to make sure we were accommodating parking demand, which we would create. I think this also could help with the parking situation, because right now, what you have is people driving into downtown, driving around, trying to park on the street. Say, for example, they're coming for a large event downtown. Now they can stay. There's additional hotel rooms that they can stay in. They can park on-site instead of taking one of those on-street parking spots.
Okay, thank you very much.
Councilman Moore.
Thank you, Mayor. Chelsea, I know you showed some slides, like materials and things like that, but really, the only question that we're addressing today is just the size of 10,000 square feet. Isn't that correct? That's the only condition of this special use permit that we're approving today? Just the size?
It's, it's not an approval of the size. The size is what triggered this process. So really, it's, I would say, more of compatibility with the surrounding area for downtown business district specifically.
Okay, thank you.
Councilwoman Farworth.
Thank you, Mayor. From listening in to the Preservation Committee and the planning and zoning meetings and such, I applaud the Shumways for the amount of patience they've had as this community has worked our way through, and the amount of grace they've shown in totally redesigning their plan and hanging with us. So I just had a couple of clarifying questions. The first one was the 109 parking spots. Those were the ones that you've counted up on the first floor and on the second floor-- Those were the ones that you've counted up on the first floor and on the second floor. You did not include any street parking in front of the hotel, correct?
Correct.
Great. And the other one that kind of stood out, so you've gotten below the height, you're below the federal building, you're below a lot of others, and I appreciated some of the Preservation Commission talking about how this really reminded them of the St. Michael, so in opposite corners of the plaza. The one that kind of stood out to a bunch of people was the big sign hanging out on the corner. Is that something that we're approving today, or is that later to come?
So that's later to come. We have to go through another process, which is actually specific to the question of the signage for, for the project. And along those lines, if I could just highlight the process again, I think this is, we've now had more than 10 public meetings on this project, and gone through an extensive process. I want to thank all the commissioners as well, who have sat in and reviewed the project with us. As you mentioned, we did go through a complete redesign of this project. There were three major concerns with the Heritage Preservation Commission. Those were related to height, massing, and the materials on the building. And as part of that complete redesign, we addressed all three of those concerns. And I'm really proud of our team and the time we spent on that redesign.
Thank you. One other question. Are you going to be, I think you are going to try and save the Centennial Tree, is what's your thoughts on the probability of that?
Yeah, so the project doesn't conflict with the tree, and so we will put forth our best efforts to not disturb the tree.
And I asked you early on, because this is a historic town and people love that old city hall, even with all of its mold and other things, is it going to be possible, as you tear it down, for us to give out pieces of history to members of the public that would love a piece of the rock before it goes?
Oh, absolutely, absolutely. That's free.
Yay!
Yeah, yeah, that's free.
Count on me to help, I'll be at the corner with a table, helping you give away the pieces that people would like.
Maybe just one comment to that. There is asbestos in the building, and so there's one caveat to that, is I got to make sure that we don't violate any sort of environmental things.
Perfect, thank you.
Councilwoman Gamboji.
In my opinion, I defer to the planning commission and Mike King's gang. The one concern that I have, you've provided parking, how many employees do you have per
So it varies by time of day.
Sure. What's the most you'd have on a shift?
15, but that would be in the middle of the day. And that's usually when guests are not using the parking. So what's nice about hotel employee usage is employee use the parking during the time when guests don't need it.
Okay, now, the ones, there are, there's a thing called unintended consequences, and I think it's important for everybody to know that as a result of putting in this property, we're going to lose 66 city parking spaces. And we don't have a, we don't have a solution for that.
That's not for me, okay.
No comment required.
I'm happy to provide my perspective if you want to, but I'm also happy not to.
Mayor, mayor.
Mayor Protem.
Thank you, mayor. You know, I want to also point out that the city of Prescott has been in talks among ourselves about the excitement of starting Economic Development Department again in the city. We're looking at finances, we're collecting data now for the first time. And I served on the last Economic Development Committee that was in the city many years ago. This is the kind of thing that, if we're going to move forward and survive in the city, we can't just rely on residential growth to pay our bills. We need a shot in the arm, we need this economic development. You know, I know that there's some estimated cost-benefit analysis to our city, which is huge, but everything that we've heard from all of the players that are looking to come to this city to participate in either retail, manufacturing, whatever it is, that we need those tax dollars to be able to move forward. The downtown in particular, I've lived in the downtown area for almost 20 years now, and with my background in building, I look at those beautiful historic buildings. One of the things I happen to know from owning a business in the downtown area, a lot of the businesses have enough money to pay their bills, but they don't have enough money to do, in some cases, what it takes to protect the structure of those historic buildings. It's very expensive engineering and making sure that the walls stay up. So I'm anxious, because not only with this hotel will benefit the city at large, it's going to benefit the businesses that currently exist down there. The people, the caliber of people that will come and stay in this hotel, they're going to be coming here to spend their dollars. And specifically, there's a certain percentage of people that won't be driving there, they'll be taking a taxi or an Uber from the airport, they won't have a car, and they're going to be reliant on staying in our downtown area, because literally, everything you need, if you're a tourist, is right there. You can shop, you can eat. So I'm excited about this, I can't wait for you to get started with it. I think it's going to be a very good move. We're at, we're at sort of a crossroads here. It's time for us to look to the future and start infusing our economic development in the downtown area in particular with something like this. We need to bring those tax dollars there. So thank you very much, and thanks for your patience, I appreciate it.
Councilmember Rusing.
Thank you. I would just like to also thank the Shumways for bringing this project to our downtown, because it will help keep it vibrant. I just got back from spending Thanksgiving week in a city the size of Tucson in Texas, down on the Gulf. And their downtown was rundown, they had vacancies, there was no traffic, and there was no, no people down there, it was kind of post-apocalyptic. And we certainly don't need that to happen to us here in Prescott. So I just think that we've done a good job so far, and we need to keep on working on keeping our downtown safe, vibrant, friendly, clean, and offer food, drinks, shopping, and entertainment. I think that's a winning combination. Thank you.
Chelsea, can you tell me what the average hotel occupancy rate is currently?
That is not my wheelhouse, Mr. Mayor, but perhaps one of my friends can, can I phone a friend? Mr. John Heine.
Let's not get into relationships.
So generally, this time of year is our lower point of the occupancy, but I think generally, our occupancy average year-round is in the mid-60s to closer to 70, it's been creeping up the last few years. So that's a year-round average.
So I think that needs to be considered when we have people in the community that are really worried about parking. If you've got 109 spaces for 104 rooms, average, it's going to be pretty rare unless there's a big event where every single room is occupied. So that frees up rooms for employees to take those spots. I know Ian Mattingly and I worked a couple of years ago to analyze the number of two-hour parking spaces within two blocks of the Courthouse Plaza. And we were able to release 128 spaces that normally would have had the two-hour shuffle involved for employees, so that we could recommend that business owners have their employees park in those areas within two blocks, so they're very close to where they work. And that frees up more space for customers of our businesses and things like that. So I think you have to take a look at the totality of what the parking impact would be. And I think we should be in pretty good shape almost all times of the year, other than maybe the courthouse lighting and some of the other major events that happen downtown. But I think that's going to be a minor inconvenience compared to the financial and economic benefits that this hotel is going to bring to the downtown area. And I've got to also compliment Shane and your brother on working on this dramatic redesign. I mean, you heard the comments that came in from historic preservation and the public at large. You changed the material on the outside, you broke it up so it didn't look like a one massive building, just because you're using three different types of brickwork on the outside. And it really does, it, the first thought, when you look at this, it looks like St. Michael's. So I think it really does fit in with the architecture down there. It's not overwhelming, you brought down the height, the utilities on the roof are not generally visible, or they're blocked. It just, I think you've really taken the public concern and worked in the redesign to make it a very acceptable design that is going to add to our downtown economic vitality, and it's going to fit in with the architecture there. So I applaud your efforts. Any other speakers? I'm sure we have some public comment.
We do, mayor.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Thank you for hearing me. I'm quite often in this town, a lone voice crying in the wilderness, and I'm not going to change now, but I believe this hotel will set a new precedent in Prescott growth and development. We have largely resisted anything that would fundamentally change the plaza in recent years until now. This Scottsdale-style luxury hotel will forever change the ambiance of the plaza we love so well, and once it is gone, we can never get it back. I'm not concerned about the parking as much as I am of the ambiance for the people who like to walk their dogs downtown or chill on the park benches. The hotel, a hotel of this scope and mass, will add increased congestion, noise, and traffic to the downtown. Plus, it will open the doors wide for future big development around the plaza, because once this precedent has been set, the city will not be in any position to turn down any future large projects around the courthouse. Over the recent decades, Prescott has sacrificed a lot of its charm in exchange for increased tax revenue. I'm sorry to see the plaza go on this list of sacrifices. Thank you very much.
Ann Marie Taylor.
Good afternoon, mayor and council. My name is Ann Marie Taylor. I've been a homeowner here in Prescott for over 25 years. My motto has always been, "Support local." Two weeks ago, I ordered a cheesecake from a restaurant downtown at Gurley and Mondazuma. My pickup date was December the 7th. I did not realize when I went to pick it up that that was the same day as the parade and the Christmas tree lighting downtown. I drove around and couldn't get anywhere near downtown. Finally, I had to go home and have my daughter drive me back downtown and park illegally and wait in the DAV parking lot while I hiked several blocks downtown to Russo's. Parking has always been an issue downtown, and individual business owners are forced to comply with the parking spaces required for their businesses before they can open. We, the taxpayers, cannot afford another potential lawsuit from another potential hotel if this special use permit is approved. It's a sad day when we, the locals, cannot afford to support local businesses downtown due to the lack of parking. Thank you.
Mayor and council, hi, good afternoon, Sandy Griffiths. They say that all good things are worth waiting for, and indeed, this mixed-use project is a great thing that we've all been waiting for. And I hope that with your significant vote in support of this special use permit today, this most wonderful, exciting project will soon ramp up, and we will see our vibrant downtown become even more vibrant and exciting. So thank you for your support, and we're looking forward to this project so much. So thank you, and I applaud Mr. Shumway and his development team, as many of you have said, for his patience and his grace. So thank you very much.
Bill and Mindy, I believe it's Shebby, but I'm not certain.
See, my name's Bill.
And Mindy.
We live on Goodwin Street, we know the stuff that goes down downtown and stuff. The big problem is, if you're losing 66 spots, they're going to go somewhere, and they're going to go in front of my house, in my driveway, and that's what's going to happen. So, and you just said, we already have a problem with the downtown area getting congested. I think your comment was, it takes pressure off the downtown. So I don't have a problem with the building, per se, I have a problem with the parking. So if they had some additional parking somewhere to compensate for the 66 that's being lost...
The other thing that we have a concern is the traffic. And we've already seen with the expansion of the sidewalk project, which was great, the whole Goodwin Street parking by the library has shifted over, and now we've got a blind spot there at Alarkin and Goodwin.
Yeah, we just had a T-bone, what, three weeks ago over there, right on that spot. So kids are running down there, it's dangerous, parking's dangerous.
So we would recommend that a four-way stop sign be placed where the two-way stop sign is right now on Alarkin and Goodwin. We see children going to that library constantly, we see elderly people going into the library, and it's just waiting to happen. That's our real big concern, other than the parking that we've already talked about.
Yeah, the building's okay, it's the parking.
Thank you.
Steven, again, I might mispronounce his last name, so I apologize, Bagnot?
Mayor and council, I'm Steven Bagnot. I've been here, living downtown almost for 40 years now. I've seen a lot of, a lot of changes. And prior speakers have pretty much said everything that I wanted to say, with a few exceptions. The size of this hotel is just incredibly massive, and it's incongruous with the, with the local, local architecture and the ambiance and the quaintness of the local courthouse area. To give you a perspective, the Hasiapa has 67 rooms, one restaurant. This is going to have 109 rooms, two restaurants, convention room, and who knows what else. But also, as far as jobs and employees, I would imagine that most of the jobs will be performed by people that aren't necessarily making a lot of money. And, you know, housing is at a premium in this town, affordable housing. And I'm seeing a situation that's happening in Sedona, I had property there years ago, and what's happening now is, is that workers cannot afford to live in Sedona anymore. They're living in other areas, and there's quite a few people that are living in their cars and actually working, you know, the service industries for the restaurants and hotels and whatnot. So to say this is going to bring jobs to our community, I don't see it. I see that as a nonstarter. I think the money, by the people that work here, a lot of the money is going to be going outside of our community. I don't think it's going to happen. Now, as far as the public input, almost 30 years ago, the city wanted to sell land, some of the Acker land. The citizenry got upset about it, and they started a movement to make that not happen. And it didn't happen. So now the Acker is now Acker Park at the end of Virginia Street. Otherwise, it would have been sold to a developer and built. So the public input did sway the... So the public input did sway the vote of the council at that point in time. Now, I looked at two different sites here, the participateprescott.com site and also the Facebook Prescott AZ site, and there's over 300 comments on those sites. Probably there's 500 or 600, I think there were a few a couple of weeks ago, too. And the ones that I just charted, looked at recently, using my math brain and my math background, was just about four to one of the participants on these sites voted against the project, mainly for three reasons: the size, traffic, and parking. And now that the developers, you know, they're going to take away, what, 60-some public parking spaces, there's no bringing that back. And the hotel over in Whiskey Row was voted down. One of the reasons was for that reason, because the developer couldn't get parking. He was reliant upon the parking garage and the courthouse. So here we've got the same similar situation where parking's being taken away, and then you've got four to one in the community that don't want this, at least not this size. Maybe something else, maybe a boutique hotel, maybe low-rise offices, you know, just, I'm sure the community can come up with things. Also, as far as the existing City Hall being, I saw a lot of comments that it was antiquated and ugly and all this other stuff. Well, there's people, there's developers, contractors, whatnot, that do renovation work, and there are professionals that deal, professional architects. I know of one in Palm Springs that deals in doing architecture to rejuvenate and renovate mid-century modern structures. Somebody like her could be hired to give the existing City Hall a complete facelift and redo and everything else, and then you could put shops in there or something else, or take the parking, part of the parking area and have a landscape architect come along and redo it and make it so it's absolutely beautiful so we maintain the character of the courthouse area. So my take on all this is that you vote against this project the way it is. I know that developers spent a lot of money in trying to get this going, but, you know, sometimes, you know, it doesn't, you don't hear from the public until the very end, until the council meeting, and I don't know if you've looked at the websites or not or checked out, you know, what I talked about, but you can see the comments there. And there's a lot more comments than what I've made and what I've heard, too. So anyway, that's my take.
Sarah Michelle Taylor.
Yeah.
Good morning, afternoon, Mayor and Council. I'm Sarah Michelle Taylor, Prescott, Arizona. As it stands, downtown already faces significant parking challenges. Further development that removes or limits parking will exacerbate this issue. We've already talked about the issues with traffic and parking, so I don't want to rehash all those out. But I do want to say we should be making sure that we're providing at least the accommodations for the employees. I know, Mayor, you talked about, for some of the other downtown spaces, they can park a couple of blocks away, but in reality, they're not. They're parking in someone else's parking spots in front of someone's house. That's the reality of what's happening as we take these parking spots away. So I just want to make sure that we're addressing the broader parking demand. I'm all for, you know, businesses coming in downtown and bringing in economic development, but we also have to make sure that we're supporting our own in the community in which we live in. Thank you.
Matthew Fish.
Mayor, Council, and staff, appreciate the opportunity to be here with you today. I'm so excited about this project. I think it's an incredible project. We're so lucky to have it. Not only did the Shumway family invest millions of dollars into the Hilton Garden Inn, which my family and friends have been so fortunate to stay in, clients, colleagues, all of them have commented on how well that project is managed, how nice it looks, and what a great contribution it makes to our downtown area. So we have a developer that's done a great job on their first project, and now we have an opportunity for them to work with us on a second project. I could talk today about why this project is important for job creation, the economic stimulus, the bed tax, all the things that we normally hear about: enhanced infrastructure, community revitalization, on and on. But I really want to talk about compatibility and breathing new life into our downtown area, along with being good stewards of our community resources. So I spend 70 hours a week downtown. I love downtown. I choose to trade the days of my life every single week to be in a vibrant, lively, happy downtown central business district. And when you're talking compatibility with food service and retail and conference rooms and be able to hold a business conference, downtown is where we take our family pictures. It's where we solve our legal matters. It's where we shop. It's where we take our clients out to eat. It's where we make business deals. Downtown is such an important place. We've talked a lot about traffic. I think to be the devil's advocate on the vehicle issues with this project, how about Whiskey Row? How many lives could be saved by having a place to safely spend the night and walk to and from our treasured Whiskey Row every single night of the week? Right? So there's a lot of different ways that we could look at this project. But my last point is just being a good steward of community resources. All of you lovely men and women were elected to protect our community resources. I think this is the highest and best use for that site. We have the opportunity to convert a dilapidated community asset into some liquid revenue that we can apply to very applicable pressing projects today, and I hope that we roll the red carpet out for the Shumways and allow them to continue and to enhance our downtown environment. Thank you.
Mark Lefkowitz.
Hi, good afternoon, Mayor and Council members. I'm Mark Lefkowitz. I've lived in town about 12 years now, and I love this town. And everything I've heard so far seems to go of really not wanting this thing coming up. I know it's probably going to come up, but, you know, I walk the square almost every day. Some of you have seen me out on the square, and I would not just walk the square, I'd walk the whole town almost every morning. And I don't see too many vacant stores. I've been to most concerts, most events this summer. This summer's been great. You know, almost all the concerts were packed. Whiskey Row packed during days when there were art fairs, which there is a lot. You know, I think parking is a really important thing, you know, and I park there every day, and I'm looking for a parking spot every morning. And I always park usually right across from the post office where that black car is over there, which I'm not going to be able to park anymore. So I sort of have a little stake in it. But when you, you know, I've lived in other towns that have grown too fast or have grown and then have changed to where it made me want to leave. You know, I love the square and especially that corner. You know, it's weird, we talked a lot about parking, and that to me is my free parking square. You know, that's the one corner where there's just not a lot going. That's the peaceful corner that will not be peaceful anymore. And in terms of parking, when you put restaurants in there, or a few have, I'm guessing a lot of that parking is underground. You know, if any of you have ever went to a hotel and tried to find, you know, when there's almost the exact amount of spots, and we're not including restaurants, we're not including people who are going to visit people at that hotel who are staying in town, that that will cause a traffic, that'll cause a traffic mess, I mean, a parking mess. You know, I don't know where people are going to park. Most of our, you know, almost, most of the people who come to the concerts are older, you know, who luckily find spots somewhere. We're not going to be able to find those spots. We're, you know, we're Americans hometown, and that's what I love about it. I love the history of the town and everything else, but somehow it's going to be some tourist town, you know, and not our town and taken away from us. I understand the economic development. I love the Hilton Garden Inn. You know, I eat breakfast there once in a while. It's a great hotel, but it's two or three blocks away from the square, and I don't see any problem with that, you know? Do we need, I'm originally from New York, maybe that's not a good thing. Do we need restaurants? Absolutely. But to put it there, where are people going to park if there, are there extra spots for the restaurants? You know, similarly to what I heard just before, like, I'm really adamant, and I think Lois has met me and have talked about it, this year I'm going to run for council. I started too late last year and couldn't get my signatures, but I put something on Nextdoor about three or four months ago, and it was overwhelmingly, the people of this town don't want it. You know, what I've heard here is, and they're great people, a real estate person who was pro and a contractor who was pro. Everybody else here who spoke is not, you know, was more or less against the project. I'm hoping, you know, I've heard like some smaller boutique restaurants or something, I'd be fine with it. Put the hotel three blocks away, I'd be fine with it. But I love this town, and I love the square, and the square will change permanently. You know, I'm hoping it's the citizens that you really listen to. You know, I'm sure this gentleman did a great job. Like I said, now that I found out he did the Hilton Garden Inn, I'm very happy about that. But not there, not at my quiet corner, not where I have my parking spot. You know, you could usually see a green FJ Cruiser parked right where that black car is. That's me, and I try and walk the square every day. I'm starting now to park all the way in Noco at North Cortez because I'm afraid that I'm going to lose my spot, and I want to get used to spots somewhere else downtown. So it's my hope that you do not approve this item, although it looks like it already says you're going to basically approve the item. So I'm not going to give up. I appreciate the time that I've had here, and I appreciate all of you. I appreciate I see Mayor Good all the time on the square, and I don't know if you under, you know, I think it's busy enough the way it is. And with that, I really appreciate your time. Thank you.
Stephen Raymond Lewis.
Hello, Mayor, Council members, staff. I'm Steve Lewis. I'm with Ardua Engineering. We're the civil engineer for the hotel project, and we have a local office here downtown. And I'm here in support of this project. I want to thank you for your partnership in, with our developer. When you offered this property to be redeveloped, I think you found a wonderful partner and a good developer. This project is a good project and has a lot of very good quality things about it. This developer's been open and transparent, working with you through the various processes that they have to, to develop this property. It's likely that any developer would have had to go through a special use permitting for any development on this property other than just a parking lot and possibly for just a parking lot. And I think that you should approve the special use permit and allow this project to move forward. Thank you.
Sean Reddy.
My name's Sean Reddy. I'm a small business owner downtown. I'm not a real estate agent, and I'm not a contractor. I do know the expense it takes to put a project like this together and to redesign it. I think it's a beautiful hotel, and I would caution those who think it doesn't have enough parking, that if it is changed to something else, the parking may disappear altogether because they are not required to have parking downtown. So I hope you guys approve it. It's a beautiful hotel. I think it adds to the aesthetic of downtown. Thank you.
Dennis Gallagher.
Mayor and Council and staff. Appreciate the time. I'll keep it short. I believe that southeast corner of the plaza has been the weakest spot of the plaza and really needs some, something new there, and this hotel meets that requirement. Mr. Shumway and the Churchill Holding Company have worked diligently with the city. I believe they've met all of the requirements of the Preservation Committee and all of the other meetings that they've gone through. They've, they've bent over backwards for meeting the city's requirements, and I believe that this should move forward. And I wanted to make a couple corrections. One of the gentlemen said, "Two restaurants, this version only has one restaurant and 104 rooms, not 109." Is that correct? And the other thing is, I have a business on Whiskey Row. Parking sometimes is a challenge, but I'm probably one of the few in the room that's downtown every day, or at least six days a week for a certain amount of time. I never have a problem finding a parking spot, either in the garage or within a small area down Whiskey Row or Goodman. And that's all I can tell you. It's, I know a lot of people don't come downtown because they say there's no parking or it's too crowded. It just depends how you, if you're a social person and how much you want to participate in downtown activities. So anyway, I believe that this, this should pass. The old building has many, many problems. It would cost a fortune to do anything with that, and this is a, an outstanding piece of architecture that fits fairly well with the community or downtown, and that's all I have to say.
That's all, Mayor.
Councilmember Rusin.
Thank you. I just wanted to clarify, you know, the comment about losing 66 spaces. I mean, when we moved over here to this building, I think we acquired, what, 95 spaces out there? So how are we losing 66 spaces at the old City Hall? Because I don't even think we had maybe 30 spaces over there. And then we have the applicant bringing 100, what is it, 104 spaces? 109. So I, I just don't understand the math when people say we're losing 66 spaces.
So to respond, I think the idea is that in the employee parking area and the visitor parking area on the lot itself, that that's where the loss would be. So it's, it's the, it's going to be covered by the, the building. But you're absolutely right. He's providing for the services that will be on that particular site.
Okay, thank you.
Well, if there's no more comments, no more public comment, then I'll entertain a motion on this item.
Mayor, I move to approve SUP 24-001.
Second.
Have motion and second please vote. All right, item 11C.
Presentation, discussion, and possible action regarding a letter of support related to aspects of water service provisions to the Mountain Club, an unincorporated community that is serviced by the city pursuant to a water service agreement.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Janet Ramsey, Public Works. And over here to assist this afternoon is Steve, first manager of the Utilities Division. The Mountain Club, several of you have been involved in this process, but the Mountain Club is a county island that has been served water by the city of Prescott for about 60 years. The Mountain Club is an unincorporated community, and as such, they own and operate their own water infrastructure. Some time ago, it came to the attention of the Water Department that their infrastructure was falling into significant disrepair. This was through a number of line breaks and a number of incidents where water was reported spilling into the streets. So in an effort to measure and reduce the water loss, we installed master meters. Those are meters that were installed at the top or at the inlet for the community, and the intent was to measure the amount of water that we delivered to the community versus that which was measured through the individual meters. We installed those meters in July 2023, and since then, the water loss, that's the number that we assume is the difference between that which is delivered and that which is metered, has ranged from 190,000 gallons to just under... metered, has ranged from 190,000 gallons to just under 380,000 gallons per month. So while there is recognition by some of the residents and the HOA, and it's, the HOA and its boards are voluntary in nature, so they lack the entity to move forward in creating an entity that would facilitate their, doing the things that they need to do, such as incurring debt and contractually obligating the community to move forward by, by securing contracts. So what we have proposed today, we've drafted a letter, and unfortunately, it is just a draft form that was in your packet. We will ensure that if you approve this, if you want to move forward, we have a final version for your signature. But we believe that this letter is in support of the community, or drafted in support of the community, to move forward with, or to, excuse me, to creating a DWID. That would be a, what is it? D. Domestic. Well, I get that one every time. Domestic Water Improvement District, and therefore becoming an entity that would allow them to do the things that they need to do, such as apply for grants, apply for loans, and contractually obligate the community to move forward with their, with their water improvements and their water infrastructure. It does not obligate the community or the city on, in any way. This letter is just a letter of support. And with that, we'd be glad to answer any questions.
Councilmember Montoya.
Thank you, Mayor. Wow, that's a lot of water.
Yeah.
Like on a monthly basis, like that's gobsmacking how much water that is to me. Have we considered adopting a carrot and stick approach with them on this, where like we, we say, hey, because it's essentially, as if I understand this correctly, this is like the first step to them agreeing to tax themselves to improve the infrastructure? And, and I wonder, it's always struck me as curious why Mountain Club is not incorporated into the City of Prescott? And I guess a thought to me is that, I don't know if they're, and I don't, it sounds like they're not organized to even have this conversation, but my thinking would be, if they were able to become a district and also annex at the same time, the benefit to those residents would be that they would no longer be paying a 30% surcharge for water being delivered outside of the city limits. And if I'm thinking of it correctly, they might also have their CAFMA property taxes go away or down significantly, and that might counterbalance the costs that they would pay for, like, you know, the cost of improving their own infrastructure? Just a thought. I just wanted to throw it out there to you guys.
Yeah, I think there's a lot of discussion to go forward. This is really just the first step. If they, when they, assuming that they create an entity that can represent the community going forward, that's really what we've lacked in our meetings with them. It's strictly a voluntary HOA and board at this point.
Councilwoman Ferworth.
Thank you, Mayor. I was kind of shocked reading this in the package, and losing that much water per month, which is coming out of, you know, everybody else's taxes to pay for this is truly unacceptable. And so when I got myself to that disgusted point, I was kind of surprised at how sweet that letter was. I think it needs to be much strongly worded. And, you know, we can either, you know, I said, why don't we just start immediately billing them? Whatever their, the number of houses is divided by the loss per month, and everyone gets a share of the bill, and that should pretty quickly move them to forming a water district and agreeing at the percent share. So I, you know, I'm sorry, I'm very blunt, and to allow this to go on for this length of time is something that we've got to solve. And I appreciated, we heard from a member of the community, we got a very long, nice letter from him. He wants our help. And so, you know, I'm not to the point, they're not living up to their end of the agreement as a community. They're outside. I would expect that the county supervisor in this area is helping us, whether that be Harry as outgoing or Brooks Compton as incoming. They need to be helping us get this water district established ASAP. So that's my, I'm all for what you're doing, but I really want the, the letter strengthened by our legal department to add a little more teeth, and more teeth, frankly. Thank you.
Yeah, I think one of the difficulties that you see here is that in terms of the teeth, we have kind of one option, and it's the nuclear option. And so we haven't kind of exercised that nuclear option, but if council is saying we want to, we're willing to threaten that, we are more than happy to do that.
And I would like to mention that we have been drafting a monthly statement of those losses since we've been capturing this information, and that's been going from Mr. Wolferz to the community. I think it actually goes to HomeCo, who is their property manager at this point, but again, not the entity that we need to deal with.
And what's the total amount that they're past due now?
Do you have that information, Steve?
The loss since we started was about 4.9 million gallons. Yes.
And what does that translate into dollar amounts that they owe?
I believe it's in the 6,000, 7,000 range, based upon the way that we've calculated.
I heard it was closer to 80,000.
I don't, honestly, I can't recall what it is directly off my head.
We can get that information.
Yep, we'll get it for you. But I didn't think, it was, again, 4.9 million is, is where we are in water loss or non-revenue water.
Mayor Protem.
You know, I have started to work with several members. I too was shocked when I first saw that a couple of years ago. I could not believe it. But this is another situation of a can getting kicked down the road because nobody knows really what to do about it. So one of the, I think we need to help and encourage. We have a new group of people that are looking at this very seriously. There's been a very storied history in the area of people coming forward, not getting support, other members not wanting to get involved in it, even though they don't have a choice. But I think at this point, we've been kind of handed a, a little bit of a gift because we now have a group of people that have decided to put their necks on the line and try to get this taken care of. It is imperative that they form the DWID, and this is a letter of support to do it. I agree with you, Lois. The, it's such an in-depth problem. There's so many steps that need to happen in order to recapture this, and this is the first very, very important step. The community has the opportunity, if the DWID is formed, to start to collect, look into grants. And you're right, the county does need to step up in this and help. And we're going to be extending that offer soon, and I believe the community has also tried to work with that. But as far as this agenda item today, we need to send a letter of support. We need to support them to get this district set up, and that will help them in the long run, thereby it's going to be helping us, because they cannot do this on their own. They're going to need help from several entities, and they can't do it with the unorganized situation that they're in right now. So I'm, I'm in favor of the letter of support. We can, you know, add more teeth if we need to, but the point is, we need to help them get this DWID set up. That's going to help us. It's going to help them now to start to go out and look for grant money and try to figure out what the problem is. It's been relatively a mystery. And now Gwen can, I don't know if Gwen's still here, she can tell you. We've been getting the, the new water, lost, lost the word. No, the, the new, you just put, you just installed all of those water meters. Oh, there it is. It's back. Yep, water meters. Sorry about that. It's, I'm, it's tired. I'm tired and it's late. Anyway, so we've just gotten a lot of the water meters that are helping us track where this water loss is coming from. So we're kind of at the beginning stages of that part of it. But as far as the letter goes, we need to do it. We need to do it immediately. We need to support these people to get this done. The can has been kicked down the road for far too long, and these people have a heart to do this, and I think we should take advantage of it. Thank you.
Councilmember Rusin.
Thank you. I just wanted to look at the, Mountain Club is, I believe, one of the oldest HOAs in the state. They've been there since the 1930s. Originally, they were just summer cabins, you know, part-time residents coming up here to vacation. And then over the years, they've morphed into a year-round community. And there's 17 water districts in Yavapai County. I mean, it's nothing new. It's, it's a wonderful tool. They need 51% of the people to pass this. And I think that we need to convey the message to them, that they need to be better stewards of this precious, finite resource, because we're basically, I just put some numbers together, we're losing water, thanks to them, that would provide for 100 homes a month. So, or 100 homes a year. So I, I think we should tune this letter up and include the map with legible, you can't read the streets, but, you know, make, give them a legible map. I think we need to include a public meeting with the community and the Board of Supervisors to answer questions and educate everybody as to how important this is, how it's going to improve their property values, to have a reliable source of, of water that's dependable and not a system that's always breaking down. So I think that we can work together with the, with the county. Like I said, this can, like you said, this can has been kicked down the road, and this is just another issue that we need to tackle. And so my other question is, I believe the vacant lots would be included in this too, because I think that's a problem, having people that aren't using the water, but they're going to be assessed. Is there some sort of a system where if they're not, they have a lot, but they're not using the water, do they have to pay the same, the same assessment?
I'll answer that. They, they don't have to pay, obviously, the water fees. They do have to pay taxes, and it's based on valuation. So if it's a vacant lot, obviously, the valuation is significantly lower. So it's property taxes through the county.
Yeah. And so maybe we could, you know, meet with them, have some numbers ready, so it's not so scary for them. And, you know, because this is just, this is just unacceptable, having this leaky system using our city water, because we have so many members of the community that voluntarily conserve water and watch their use. And then on the other hand, we have another community that is, you know, wasting all this water. So are we ever going to get ahead? Thank you.
Councilman Campoggi. I kind of like the nuclear option, but I'd like you to explain the difference between the two options that are written up here.
I think that's probably a joke question, right?
Well, I think we may be referring to the provision of, extension of the pipeline for a little bit, is the question. But I'll tell you, the nuclear option. Yeah, so option two, and it's not a separate option. It's a second question we're asking for a direction on whether to extend the main, the water main to two pieces of property.
Right. And in, and in fact, Mr. Wolferz is here, and he can, he can speak to that a little bit more before we go into that, if you'd like.
Hello again, Steve Wolferz, Utilities Manager. We do have one property that's split between Mountain Club and the city. This property was once multiple properties that have been brought together. So one half of the property is served by the city, one half of the property is served by Mountain Club. So the solution would be, it would, if the city would like to, is to extend the main around to that meter that is the Mountain Club meter and bring them into the city. Or the, the staff recommendation is to not do that because of the cost. We're talking 77,000 or so dollars for, for a single homeowner, and that would obviously come at the city expense. So that's the second half of the, of the question we have.
If I may, regarding the, make the letter meaner. Just to be clear, what that means is, we have, the only real option we'll have eventually would be to cut off service of water through the pipes. So that would be the threat that we would include in there if, and I can write a mean letter, but I just want to be clear on that and to get clear direction back from council, if that's what you'd like.
Okay, since I'm the meanie, can I say something, Mayor?
Well, I don't know if you really have to, Lois, because I've been in meetings with these groups, and I, from the very beginning, said we can't afford to have this amount of water continue to be lost. You can either fix it, get your district created, or we're going to shut off your water. So let your owners know that, because there is a solution here by creating this Domestic Water Improvement District. So get on board, communicate to those owners. They've got a lot of owners there that don't want to do anything. They've never had to do anything. They've never had an assessment. So they're, they just keep ignoring it until something gets really bad. And the bad would be no water. So let's help them create this district so that they can then get the owners to realize what the consequences are, because it's a much better solution for each one of those owners to be in this district than to continue to thumb their nose at the water being delivered and having it massively lost. Councilmember Ferworth, do you want to make further comment?
Well, you said, let's put the, the stick out there, and I agree. I think it's important that the, that the owners hear from the city, that if they do not move forward, this is our remaining option, and we will execute it. And it doesn't have to be in a mean way, but it's in a professional way. This, this is it. I don't want them to think they don't, they can keep delaying this any longer.
Mayor Protem.
I, I agree with you on that. I think that that letter, I think we can tighten this one up, and I think that that threat of the nuclear option is there. But having said that, there, as I said, there's a history to what's happened there, and I think that this is the first time in a long time that we have people that are willing to see this thing through. We've got three of them here, and I know a couple of them you want to speak, but, but we're just being asked to support this. If we want to put a timeline on the DWID, maybe they can talk to their attorneys, we can figure out what the estimated timeline, and allow them to have the time to get this DWID formed. And then if that doesn't happen in a timely manner, then, you know, all bets are off. But, but I think in good faith, they're trying right now to get it going. They've been spending a lot of time on it, and this is the most movement I've seen out of that community in a long time. Do you agree?
Absolutely, yes.
Yeah, so I think there's a chance. So you guys do what you want, but I think we've got to have this letter, and we've got to get them going on their way. Thank you.
Councilmember Rusin.
I think if we send out the letter, we should include a meeting and a time and a date with the Board of Supervisors and the city, and invite the public from Mountain Club, the residents from Mountain Club, to this meeting so we can answer questions. And it kind of would make things more real for them. And because you're right, they're used to not having to do anything, and, you know, they don't, they don't care if the water leaks all over, obviously, but, you know, it's time, as elected representatives, we need to have the political will to deal with difficult subjects like this. And, you know, if we have to cut off their water, we can offer a standpipe where they can come and fill up containers if they want, or haul water. But, you know, we can't say, oh, you're not going to have any water at all, but at least offer an option for them. Thank you.
And they don't know where the leak is, by the way. Otherwise, they, they're having a hard time finding it. They just can't.
Yeah, they don't know where their water lines are. They cross the property lines, and it's, it's just a, it's a real challenge, to say the least.
Yes, we do, but their pipes are much too small for that. They're all two-inch or, or lower.
All right, let's move on for.
Mayor, I move. Oh, sorry. There is public comment. Gloria McConnell.
Hello, my name is Gloria McConnell. I'm the current president of the Mountain Club, and have been the chairperson on the Water Solutions Committee for the last year and a half plus. And I was going to come up and start with a heartfelt thank you for the support that we've gotten from the city on. we've gotten from the city on our work to form a Dwit. But now that I've been gobsmacked for the first time in a public forum with negative comments about the Mountain Club, I'm feeling a bit cantankerous, but I want to stay on focus and I'd just like to clarify a few things. First of all, the Mountain Club does care about the water loss, so nothing could be further from the truth. I can't speak to people of the past. This whole situation has a mysterious past dating back to the 1920s, '30s, '56, you name it. And we're here now. So, the people here now do care about the water loss. Water is not running down the street. As soon as we see a leak, we get it fixed by a registered contractor. So, I have to tell you, we don't know where these leaks are. And in terms of who wastes water and whether it's all Mountain Club's responsibility, I will tell you, I live on the corner of Arroyo and Arroyo in Mountain Club and there was water running down the street for over two years and through the culvert for many years, perhaps decades. And we were told that it was a natural spring. We said, "There's a leak." And what happened was, you put in a French drain on the city portion of Arroyo and it redirected something so that it then became running down the street next to my house for over two years. And the city water department, with no disrespect meant, said that this was a natural spring. Many of us who had owned properties there for many years, we bought our property in 1990, knew that this was highly suspicious, but we had no recourse. And guess what? We finally found out, I believe it was shortly after the master meters were installed, that it was on the city property and it was a city responsibility. And this leak had been gushing thousands and thousands and thousands of gallons for God knows how long. And the initial response to us was that it was a natural spring. So, we are not the only people having problems with leaks, understanding where they are and how to resolve them. And I really, I have to tell you personally, I resent the bashing of the Mountain Club. We have our many faults, believe me, but this is not one of them. We do care about the water loss. We want to form the Dwit so that we can gain access to the funds that are needed at the levels needed to fix our infrastructure. And we want to work with the city on these matters. So, that's my cantankerousness. Now, to get to the letter of support, I understand you wanting to be mean and really get the whip out, but to form a Dwit, we have to convince 51%, and maybe it's because I'm just not a mean person, but we have to convince 51% of the homeowners to sign the petition in favor of forming the water district. And we have held, and also in terms of some of the statements made earlier by this room, we have held over, we have held six public meetings in the Mountain Club trying to inform our residents as to the situation. We have just recently put up a website that we're going to be using to refer folks to when we pass our petition around. And so, we have done many things to get the word out to Mountain Club residents and also city residents that are within the Dwit boundaries. By the way, there are about a dozen city properties and they need to be made aware that they're going to be in the Dwit and we've tried to do that. Anyway, I'm losing my train of thought. We need a letter of support and I don't know if you think threatening the residents would work. I'm just not sure. I believe, well, I don't know, maybe it would work. But we'd like you to let them know you support the formation. And for my two cents worth after, right now, I'm thinking it'll be a positive approach might be better than a negative approach as far as, I'm not going to get into the legal aspects of whether or whether or not you could stop serving the Mountain Club water. That's a whole nother discussion for another time. But anyway, we'd like that letter of support. And I guess if you want to make it a harsh letter, you know, it's not clear to me if the city council would, or the city would be mailing that letter out. If so, you need a clarification on to whom you would send it because it is not all the Mountain Club residents. It's the people within the boundaries, which, as I said, includes people that are not residents, county members, and it includes city members, city residents. So, you would need to get that proper mailing address if you're going to mail that letter out directly from the city. And we can provide that. As far as the master meters, also, I'd like to say, and I can tell you're all very tired because you've been here a very long time, I would just like to say that the Mountain Club has several questions about the accuracy of that data. And we're not saying that we aren't losing water, but I'm telling you right now, it is not running down the street. We fix every single leak as soon as it's visible above ground. And we bug people if it's above ground and we can't find it in our property, like the Arroyo leak, which our bugging of the people was to no avail. But at any rate, we have questions about the accuracy of that data. Let's just put it at that. So, that's something to keep in the back of your mind. We're not saying it's not there, but it's not necessarily running down the street by any means. And so, and it's so late, I don't know, do you want to go into the Maricopa property too? Or how do you, I don't know what your protocols are when things are running at this hour.
If you want to make a comment on that property.
Yes.
We're going to be making a decision on it here very quickly.
Okay, so, the Maricopa property is at the corner of East Pine Knoll Drive and Maricopa and Aspen Way. It's basically those three streets. Aspen Way, you may know, Aspen's by the Creek is a little like patio home or condo. I'm not sure what kinds of homes those are, but they have very small lots. In 2013, the property owners who had purchased multiple parcels at that location combined them and asked the city to annex them. Three of the properties were city properties at the time, a couple were county properties not in the Mountain Club. They were not all in the Mountain Club Water Service Area, which is the 1998 Water Service Agreement area. And in fact, for sure, you know, I only had half a day to prepare this because nobody notified me of this meeting. So, I'm going to say, to the best of my knowledge, only one, maybe two of those five parcels was in the Mountain Club Water Service Area according to the 98 agreement. So, the city agreed, annexed them, they all got plopped together and all voila, all of a sudden, we are now responsible for 37,000 square feet of property. We don't care, I mean, every, we are not concerned if it's a single property, the way it is today. Our concern is in the future, given the size of the property, it could be rezoned for multiple properties. And we, the future Dwit Board, Dwits are governed by their own boards. It has nothing to do with the Mountain Club community. In fact, they're elected board members, elected by the public. But anyway, in the future, it could be developed by my math in a half a day into up to eight properties. And that would be a problem for the Mountain Club Water District if it should be formed. So, that's our concern about thinking about having the city take that one single property out of over 400 in the Dwit boundary area. And the other consideration was that we know there's a home being constructed directly across the street from the water meter to that parcel. And so, we thought, well, it might, they might just leverage that construction work, whatever they're doing for that home that is under construction, and extend the pipe to that meter so that down the road, kicking the can down the road, when the property owners want to develop it into something, because Aspen's by the Creek is a very different format than the current zoning, which is a 12,000 square foot minimum property. Even with that zoning, it could be three properties and it's currently one residence, I mean, three residences. So, we were asking the city to consider taking that one property because of these things that I've discussed. So, I don't know if any of you have any questions or comments. I'm happy to take them. I've been working on this night and day for the last year and a half and I feel like you can ask me anything and I'll probably.
Councilman Montoya.
Yeah, I just, I just want to say thank you for clarifying some of the things you said today. And I'm sorry that some of the comments that were directed at Mountain Club were so glib. So, for what it's worth.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Councilmember Rusi.
Thank you. I just want to thank you, Gloria, for tackling this extremely difficult problem. And we really appreciate it because somebody had to step up.
I had known.
Yeah. And it does seem like a thankless task, but I think in the long run, it's going to be appreciated. And I just want to apologize. I think Mountain Club's a very iconic part of Prescott. In fact, a lot of people think it is in the Prescott city limits. It's in the pines. And it's, you know, one of our more affordable areas for people, you know, starter homes, people that are working, families live there. But I think if we work together, hopefully, we can convince 51% of the property owners to form this.
We've been trying very hard and I will tell you, unfortunately, or fortunately, I'm not sure, almost 40% of those property owners are non-resident property owners. They either own a vacation home or they own a rental. And so, those folks, I feel like we need the sugar cube rather than the whip, maybe because they'll say, "Well, we'll just sell it and then we won't get our 51%." So, it's a thought as to the tone of the letter. I don't know, because I've never done this before.
Yeah. And I believe there's probably whiff of funding, there's infrastructure grants.
There's so much funding.
Yeah, out there.
Oh, my goodness. And we can't touch it in our current form as a 501(c)(7).
You need a tool.
We need to be an entity that is recognized and a 501(c)(7) corporation is not recognized for these funding purposes.
Okay, all right.
And believe me, we tried. We've tried. We've looked into doing it directly. We've looked into getting things and can't qualify.
Mayor Protem.
I was going to make a movement, but here, I also wanted to make mention to everybody on the council here. If the form, the Dwit is formed and they're able to tackle those problems and there'll be some other issues with the sewer, being annexed into the city after all these problems are solved is not off the table at some point in the future, possibly. I think it might have been Gwen at one of the meetings that made the point, "Why would we inherit all those problems by annexing now?" So, you know, in the future, so long as things are taken care of and they get a handle on this, it probably is not off the table. So, we'll have to just see what happens. But Mayor, may I go ahead and make a motion?
Hold on a second. Gloria, I just want to make sure that you understand, the council supports the creation of this Dwit.
Thank you.
We just are dealing with so many water issues, water management issues. Arizona Department of Water Resources, we're trying to encourage people in the city to manage their own water more effectively and more conservatively. So, at the same time, we see this vast amount of loss occurring in the Mountain Club. We don't have a whole lot of patience for it. But we do want to make sure that this Dwit is formed so that the problems can be solved in a way that I think the residents and the owners will understand, because they have to understand what the consequences are too, if they decide not to. And that's what we're trying to do, is to encourage them to make the right decision, but also understand if they defer or decide they're not going to, what the consequences could be if they don't support you. So, we have to balance the support of your creation of your Dwit. At the same time, we just can't continue to tolerate the vast amount of loss, whether that happens deep underground or, I mean, I'm sure the city is not completely innocent over the years that it's kind of looked the other way at some of these conditions. So, the point is, it's got to be fixed and it's got to be fixed pretty darn soon because the loss is just intolerable. Okay, go ahead, Mayor Protem.
Thank you.
I make a move to sign a letter in support of the formation of a Domestic Water Improvement District for delivery to the Mountain Club property owners. And then, Sarah, do I conclude number two?
Yes. Yes, you can.
And decline the option of a water main.
Well, no, if you're, if you're making a motion to approve and a motion to decline, then you cannot do them together.
Okay, that's what I was wondering. They're both the same. Okay. So, do you want me to start over?
Second.
Okay. Thank you.
I have a motion, a second, please vote. Make a second motion?
Decline the option, no, is that, I thought we just talked about that. Make, make a.
Motion to decline.
Motion to decline.
Continue from there.
The option of a water main extension at city expense on Aspen Way in the Mountain Club.
Second.
So, a yes means to decline. Correct.
That's why I asked, I was wondering about that second part. Can we put them together or do we need to separate them?
You already made two motions. Passes 7-0.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. We'll work with the attorney's office to get that drafted.
To item 11D.
Approval of multiple items related to budget appropriations and purchases for public safety as follows. Number one, adoption of resolution number 2024-1909 approving the transfer of budget appropriation from general fund contingency to the fire and police departments in the fiscal year 25 budget and amending the city job roster for the addition of 12 public safety positions. And two, approval of city contract number 2025-115 for the purchase of one fire engine truck for new station 76 from Rosenbauer Minnesota LLC.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council, Lars Johnson, Deputy Finance Director. After the passage of 478 and the official canvas today, we're, the city is in the fortunate position to take this action. You'll recall in the budget process, we set aside certain contingencies that were lumped together, not in the Public Safety Department. So, this action will then distribute those budgeted items back to the department so they can move forward with those operational and capital needs. This does not mean that each of the expenditures are thus approved. It's moving budget only and then those follow the normal process through procurement and things to move forward. The second item, second motion will be presented by Fire Chief Holger Dura. If there's any questions on the first motion, I could take those.
Councilman Gambogi.
I withdraw.
All right, Mayor and Council, Holger Dura, Fire Chief. The second item that you see before you is very similar to an item that you approved a couple of months ago, the last time we bought a replacement fire engine, as a matter of fact. The urgency and the reason why this is presented to you in conjunction with the appropriation is because by doing it this year, we're able to capture 2024 pricing for the new engine 76. As we know, cost increases are quite significant these days, especially on rolling stock, and this helps us capture that same price that we paid a couple of months ago for that engine. Of note is that this is an 18 to 24-month build time. And while that seems very long, I think the timing might just be right for us to time that engine to arrive, hopefully, right around the time that we're starting to see substantial completion for station 76. That's knocking on wood, of course. We're, you know, Murphy still has to come visit a couple of times. But any questions that you have about that engine or the reasoning for us including it in this motion, I'm happy to take those at this time.
Yeah, I know the price tag is pretty shocking sometimes and the lead time is also very shocking. But it's my understanding, there's only two companies in the whole state, the whole country that make these fire trucks, right?
There's a few more, but. There's a few more, but yeah, there's, it is a niche market. Let's just, let's just call it that. It's not exactly like we can go down to the car dealer and get us a fire engine. You're absolutely correct.
Yeah, there's probably a couple that dominate the market.
Yes.
And the other ones have either a higher price tag, a longer lead time, or both.
Correct.
Yeah. Any other comments or concerns? Any public comment?
No, Mayor.
See, the one time I asked for it, and there's none. Okay, well, if we have no other comments, then I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Murray, I have a question. Like in the previous proposal, Sarah, are these two motions or one?
You can do this as one motion. So the issue with the previous motion, I just want to clarify, is that even though everybody voted yes, one motion was to approve something, and the second motion was to deny something. So that does need to be two. If you're voting to approve both items, you can do it as one.
Thank you. Therefore, I move to adopt resolution 2024-1909 and move to approve city contract 2025-115.
Second.
That was beautiful. Okay, we have a motion, a second, please vote.
Passes 7-0.
On to 11E.
Adoption of ordinance number 2024-1873, an ordinance of the mayor and council of the city of Prescott, Yavapai County, Arizona, amending Prescott City Code Title IV Business Regulations by adopting a new chapter 4-6 entitled Business Occupational and Professional Licenses.
Okay, thank you very much, Mayor and Council. This is a conversation, or following up on a conversation that the council had last year. I unfortunately wasn't part of that conversation, so you'll have to fill in maybe where I'm missing in nuance. But I think from the presentation, I understand that there were four specific outcomes that the council was hoping for with a business license. These include an understanding of who is doing business in the city, business emergency contact information in sort of a registry, improved communication and support to local businesses, because we know who they are and how to contact them. And then an entry point for business interactions, as businesses come in and they need to go get their business license, it helps us to know who we need to be supporting and how we can be helping them. The business license ordinance as drafted includes all businesses. I wanted to note a few exemptions to that. Those include independent contractors. So if you're, you know, I'll use Uber as an example. If Uber has a business license, each individual Uber driver wouldn't need a business license. Similar for other sort of models like that. Nonprofits are not included. Home-based businesses are not included. Remote workers, landlords, events, and vacation rentals, as well as schools and government entities, are among those who are not included as this is currently drafted. With the remaining businesses, there's an assumption there of about 1,800 businesses that would share in the, in the costs. As you see, roughly $90,000 per year with about $170,000, including the two-year implementation period. So that puts us at a spot of about $50 a year with maybe like a $50 application fee. The specific amount of the business license could be approved later. You see in the, in the packet, typically, you know, as we look around Arizona, you're looking at the $30 to $70 range, and that's something that we can set. But to cover the costs of an employee, we're looking at about $50 per business license. And finally, I'll just note the interest in maybe a little bit of a delayed start. If the council were to say move forward, to move forward with this and get the business license started, we would start with a, you know, a recruitment process and starting to get our procedures together. So whether that's a July 1 start or a January 1 of next 2026, we would just need some lead time to get the capacity to do this. That's a quick summary of my report. I'm happy to answer what questions I can or take any direction.
Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I read through this, and I have been a big supporter of a business license for many reasons, especially in a community of our size. And I did, I did also pull the list here for the state of Arizona. Somebody said 11, I could only find four communities that didn't have a business license. And they were small communities. One was, you know, 1,100 population, and I think the other one was 7,000. So, you know, for a growing city like us, and again, the interest in economic development, and John Heine can talk about it, I've been a member of many development, economic development groups over the years, both down in Phoenix, Scottsdale, and up here. And we were able to collect so much data from the fact that we knew who was setting up businesses, what they were going to generate for us, keeping them straight, because there were a lot of offenders that had set up businesses that were discovered later on to not be good businesses for the city. I just think it's a mistake for us, as we enter into a new time in Prescott and our growth, we've got to have a business license to, for all the reasons that you had mentioned. I would support, you know, again, I've had many businesses, like business license I paid for the whole time I've had a career in businesses. It's not a big deal. Although I would support a two-year renewal rather than a one-year renewal. Yes, I do agree. I think the charge does need to cover the cost to the taxpayer for running that department. I do believe that nonprofits still need to register. They can be exempt from paying the fee, but I think that we deserve to know where they are and who they are in this city. I just understand, one of my comments was, I'd like to see this implemented a little sooner, you know, to be able to help economic development and what it's going to disclose if we have to wait. I understand that. The reasons that you had mentioned were to create and maintain a directory of emergency contact information. That's very important. The other thing is our firemen and our policemen, they need to know what they're walking into. If this is a, you know, a hazardous waste dump, it's a business. I think they deserve to know that before they show up on a, on a call. Ensure the health and safety through fire and building inspections. Now, a lot of that does take place if they're, especially if they are operating with hazardous waste. Track, track, this is a big one. Track the business statistics for and trends in our city. Again, this is all for economic development. Track the prevalence and impact of vacation rentals and sober living homes. Now, that was before, and a lot of that has been taken care of on a state level, so that's probably not going to apply to us that much anymore. But I just think that we've got to create a robust business database to enhance city support for local businesses and our economic development. So I hope everybody can support this, and for all those reasons I just cited. Thank you.
Councilwoman Moore.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate Connie's perspective and her thoughts on that. As a business owner in the community for over 20 years, I guess I'm looking at it from a business owner's perspective. I think maybe we're looking at it from a city perspective, but maybe there's a benefit to the city, but what's the benefit to the business? Why do I need to register my business with the city? I've been in business, like I said, over 20 years, and so part of that time I've had a business license, part of that time I haven't had a business license, and I've seen no difference, whether I had a license or not. It didn't affect my relationship with the city or the services that the city provides to me as a business owner. And it seems onerous that a small business maybe would pay the same amount as a Costco for a business license, or a Safeway, or a Fries. Maybe if you're going to implement this, you have a tiered approach so that a Costco or a Safeway or Fries pays a higher fee for a business license than a mom-and-pop business. I think that's something to consider. I think that's really important. But I personally don't see the need for a business license. I haven't, personally.
Councilwoman Montoya.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't, I don't see the need for it either, and I run a business as well. I think this is everything that people hate that government does when it comes to a tax that pays for permanent bureaucracy. So we're basically creating a fee to match up with the salary of a city employee that doesn't exist right now. And that feels like making government bigger, not smaller, which doesn't feel like a very conservative value to me. So I don't like it for that reason. And I also don't like it for Eric's suggestion that, as a business owner, and especially as an established business owner, I don't see any value that this presents to me. The data that you mentioned before, all that data is readily available through Yavapai College. They actually have a person whose job is to do all that economic demographic data. I know this because he's come and presented to council at least twice, and he does a pretty good job presenting that data to us. But failing him doing that, the Chamber of Commerce also maintains that data as well. And if you're a private entity and you don't trust either of those people, you can hire a company called Brooks &amp; Dunn that does it professionally all over the country. And the reason I know about all these things is because many of the companies that come to Prescott already rely on that data set that's widely available. As to the hazardous materials part, that's one part that I could, could understand. I think creating a registry of people who are dealing hazardous waste, hazardous material is probably important. I imagine the state does something around that already, but I don't know.
Councilmember Rusing.
I support the business license. I think that it's very important for our economic development strategy to have a business license so that, for all the reasons that we've been talking about. But for me, mainly ensure health and safety through fire and building inspections and zoning code reviews. If there was a business license and we receive a complaint, we can investigate it and have some consequences until they comply. You know, why have zoning codes and health and safety requirements if you have no way to make people comply? So I think this would be an excellent tool for many reasons, and I totally support having a business license.
Councilwoman Ferworth.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm open to supporting the business license, but I just did a little bit of benchmarking myself yesterday with PV and Chino Valley, and I'm not sure, we've taken very different approaches. For example, PV and Chino Valley include home-based businesses. They include commercial and rental landlords. They include special events. They have peddler licenses. They do some other things. And, and I just, literally by reading this, and I read it four times, again, I'm open to the concept, but I'm not sure I'm supportive of this proposal and the amount of either due diligence or benchmarking that went into this, whether we've engaged the business community at all. You know, I'm the liaison to the downtown partnership. We have lots of ways, I think we could go benchmark with our two neighbors who've been at it a long time. They also don't have an annual all, all-in-at-the-same-time-it's-staged throughout the year. So I, I am open to it, but I'm not prepared to vote yes on this proposal today.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate Councilwoman Montoya's comments. I think this is really a redundancy of information that is readily available in the community. We don't need to reinvent the wheel. Like you said, Yavapai College has this information, Brooks &amp; Dunn, I get those information in the mail all the time, Chamber of Commerce. And we're creating a position that's going to be funded by the fees that we're charging the people. It just seems so ridiculous to me. And as a business owner, I get fire inspections every year, Kathy, and I don't have a business license. They come into my business every year and they do a fire inspection. I don't need a license to have a fire inspection. That's part of what they do. They come in and they inspect my business. So I just don't think there's a need for it.
Mayor Protem, you have another comment?
Yes, I do. You know, we've all talked a lot about, or I for sure have talked about this, moving this city out of a 1957 mindset and into the real world today. We have to have something like this at some point for many reasons. Legally, let me give you an example. When you, people that, and the reason I think you two don't want it, and I paid it, it's the cost of doing business. I, you know, I worked in large municipalities, you pay it, you get it over with, it's just it. But when we come to Prescott, we have set up a situation here where we are blind in so many ways. You two people are honest business people, but you have to agree that in the past, this city has suffered by businesses that are not as honest as you. And we were blindsided, and I'm going to cite the drug rehab businesses. If you go Google your computer tonight and go in there and say drug rehab in Prescott, I just did it two days ago, we now have 99. That has an impact on our public services. It has an impact on my neighborhoods. It has an impact on our restaurants. I mean, this is information this city needs to gather so that we know how to react. When I did the work back in 2017 and I gathered the information, how much time our policemen and firemen were devoting our tax dollars towards this industry, it was millions of dollars. We need to gear up for that. That was part of the reason we had the problem. I think as a city that's growing, we need this information to keep some people straight and honest and make them pay their fair share, if that's what it's going to take. The other part of it is, we can't be blindsided by people that want to do us harm or want to take advantage of this beautiful city and many of these good citizens that were taken advantage of. And part of this is knowing who is doing business in our city. And by the way, Eric, if I'm a, if I'm a bird seed person, manufacturer coming into Prescott, I'm going to want to know where you're located. And the first thing I'm going to do is go down to my city and look and see on the registry who's doing business that's going to be in competition with me. And I'm going to, that's going to make a big decision about where I would go if I were going to set, set up a business in this city. They do it all the time. So I just think that it's time to grow up. The city has to grow up. We've got to move forward. We need to provide this staff, our police and fire, with the information that they deserve to serve this community and be able to recognize these trends, whether they're positive or they're negative. And I think that by us not having a business license rendered us blind the last time we were taken advantage of. So it's a small price to pay for giving the city the tools they need to go after these bad actors if they, if they come again. We just have to be ready. That's what every other city in this state does, except for the four that I found last night online. So anyway, it's a small price to pay. I know you don't want to pay the $50. Nobody does. That's why I'm saying extend it to every two years. It's a pain in the butt. It was a pain in the butt for me to direct my attention to that. I'm working a lot of hours to have to pay my business license. But I'm telling you, we're on the other side of the coin here. As a citizen representative panel, we have to set this city up with the tools they need in order to help us move forward. Thank you.
You know, I'll bring up the fact that I was on council when we initiated the last business license. At that time, we made a commitment to the business community that we would maintain a directory of businesses, what type of businesses, where they were located, so that if another business wanted to locate in the city and they knew that they were going to potentially be competing with similar businesses offering a similar product or service, then they could look into that directory and it would help them make a decision on if they would relocate, and if they did relocate, where to relocate, so that they would be, have the best chance of having a successful business. Well, I remember talking to the department over the couple of years. We never put that together. And I felt that that was a breach of contract, because we had made a commitment to the business community to provide a service that we never delivered. So I felt that, and then also, the amount of fire inspections required under that business license was pretty onerous. When we had business suites with maybe somebody who does tax preparation, or some other business that was so minimal, to have them have to go through a fire inspection for every single suite in there was just over the top. So that's why I actually recommended that that business license be dissolved, because we breached our contract. We didn't provide what we said we would. But I think it's important that we do have an understanding of who's doing business where. Very minimal requirement for registration and a very minimal cost to be able to have that knowledge. I remember speaking to the attorney for the Arizona League of Cities and Towns, and she was saying, you know, there's a number of, of grant opportunities that are available that we never sent to you because you don't have a business license. You're not eligible for it. And that's probably why there's only, you know, between four and 10 other. And that's probably why there's only, you know, between four and 10 other small towns in the whole state that don't have a business license. So that convinced me that there's benefits available to us that we're not even aware of, because they don't even send that out to us, because they keep a track of what cities and towns have business licenses and which don't. So I think there is some additional benefits to us. And I also think that the nonprofits, although sometimes you'll look at quote-unquote a nonprofit hospital, and they've got a CEO making $700,000 a year or something like that, just because they have to be able to distribute their profit to a point where they can claim that they're not profit. So I think nonprofits need to be identified. Sometimes they're, you know, they're such a small organization with very little revenue. So if we can make it just at the most minimal level of just registering somehow so we know where they are and what services they're providing, that would be acceptable. So I don't know if we need to table this and maybe research it a little bit more so we can identify exactly what the upside and downside is. But I think in the long run, we really need to adopt a business license. So I'm not sure if we're ready to have the necessary information. I think that the objections that we've heard so far could be resolved with a little more information.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we postpone this.
Second.
Well, we have a motion and a second to postpone the decision on the business license. Do we need a date specific on this? Alan, go ahead.
Can I just get clarification on what it is that I would, that staff would be researching? What are the elements you'd like to see changed? And then if, yeah, if there's a timeline, that's helpful, too.
I have some thoughts on that, if I may. So I, when it comes to, what I would like to know before we move forward is, I would like to know what type of building inspections the city is already executing right now and, and what, what that is giving us in terms of public safety concerns that we do or do not have. And I'd like to hear those concerns from our police and fire department, not... So, so I guess I'm saying, because it's been suggested that this business license would create some additional data around hazardous waste materials. I'd like to know, do we have a, a way of knowing who's doing hazardous waste material storage here? The other thing I'd like to, to do or to get direction from or give direction about is what Lois suggested, which is, I'd like to do a clear understanding of what we are doing, like what other communities are doing. Because my, I remember when I started working at Edward Jones, the city did have a peddler's license. And I know because I applied one. I applied for one. I don't know if we still do, but I, because I, Edward Jones makes you go and knock on doors, so I had to knock, I had to get a peddler's license. So I remember there being a peddler's license. So some of this we already have. I'd also like to know when it comes to the data, maybe there are gaps that Yavapai College is not identified in their data set? Maybe there are gaps that Chamber of Commerce is not like covering in their data set? I'd like to know what their data looks like and see if we are being redundant or if there is some additional information we could, we could add to it. So those are my thoughts.
Mayor Matt.
Counselman Moore.
Thank you, Mayor. I actually had my button pushed before Ted made his motion, and I just wanted to comment back to what Mayor Protem was saying about businesses coming to town. All a business needs to do when they're coming to town is just Google, who sells birdseed in Prescott? They don't need a business license directory from a municipality to find that information out. It's readily available on the internet. And I just think we're overthinking this, and I still think if we're doing this, then there needs to be a benefit to the business, not just to the city. I suspect that's what you're thinking, there's going to be a benefit to the city by having this business license in place.
Mr. Mayor, we have a motion and a second.
We have a motion and a second on the floor. So we have to vote. Please vote.
Passes 6-1.
Okay, City Manager, we can talk a little more about what research needs to be done to bring it back to the council so we have the understanding of what the benefits are and what the downside might be.
Right. So, so goals are helpful. I've also heard interest in whether we include nonprofits. So that would be helpful to know, whether we do tiers on the fees, whether we do a one-year or a two-year renewal, and then some of the other things that have been mentioned just.
Get some clarification, though. This, this did not include an inspection. This was, this was to be a simplified version to collect information only. There will be no inspections.
Correct. This version doesn't include any additional inspections beyond, you know, the, the regular inspections that would happen, the building process or a fire.
But, but, but I do suggest when we craft our, if we do this, our business license, that we have a question on there. Do you handle hazardous materials? And they either yes or no. That's information that we collect in our database, and that's for the benefit of these firemen and policemen that have to go out on these calls. They need to know ahead of time if this person is, you know, I don't know, manufacturing fentanyl.
Volunteering that information would be really helpful for the police department.
Well, I'm sure you can make your concerns known to the city manager as he's looking into providing the information that we would need to make a decision at a future time. So I'll close this meeting with just a Christmas blessing for all those many, many peoples remaining here in the chambers and for those of you online. May God bless you as we all approach this most important of holidays, Christmas. We Prescottonians are so blessed in this most wonderful of cities, Arizona's Christmas city. May you celebrate these next few weeks with your family and friends with gratitude in your heart, a true appreciation for the reason of the season, and embrace the generous spirit of Christmas. Merry Christmas, everyone, and may God bless you all.